Ontario for installing a permanent commemoration of our modern day military veterans who served in Afghanistan. Canada Company commends you for embracing the vision of the program by committing to recognize and memorialize the efforts of nearly forty thousand Canadian Armed Forces who served and one hundred and sixty-two Canadians, one hundred and fifty-two servicemen and women, and four civilians that lost their lives during the conflict in Afghanistan from two thousand and one to two thousand and fourteen. The LAB III was made by Canadians to protect Canadians while they carried out their mission to restore peace and government half a world away. It was and continues to be the workhorse of the Canadian Forces. It now returns to your community in the form of a monument to honor your local veterans and our nation's fallen. It will symbolize the completion of the latest chapter in Canada's military legacy while encouraging a stronger connection between the citizens of your community and our veterans. It will provide a symbolic gathering place to reflect and remember their service and sacrifice delivered to protect our way of life and freedoms. Congratulations to your community's volunteers, sponsors, and contributors for uniting to allow current and future generations to share your appreciation and pride for our Canadian Military. Signed, Blake Goldring, Honorary Colonel of the Canadian Army, Major General Dave Fraser, former Commander of Afghanistan South, Chair of the LAB III Monument Selection Committee. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to present first this letter of approval to the community.
Thank you very much.
And from the regiment and the Regimental Trust, Regimental Council of the Royal Highland Futures of Canada, please accept this replica of the LAB as a memento of our partnership in this project. Thank you.
Wonderful. Let me shake your hand once more.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And maybe just, absolutely. Honorary Colonel Rainville, ladies and gentlemen, and council, it's a real pleasure to accept this, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you and to thank the Regimental Council for all of your support and work in terms of ensuring that Kitchener received one of the monuments as part of the monument program. And I also want to acknowledge our now CAO, then DCAO of Finance and Administration for the work that he was involved in along with other staff in helping ensure that this monument found a home at our local armory next to the auditorium, and we look forward to the unveiling of it. I did see it all shrink wrapped the other day, and I look forward to the unveiling on Saturday at two o'clock. So, thank you very much.
Okay, our next presentation is Justin Watkins to provide an update on the Kitchener-Waterloo Joint Services Initiative, and the report is attached in your agendas.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic, and members of council. Pleased to be here this evening on behalf of Kitchener Senior Management Team to provide update on behalf of the Kitchener-Waterloo Joint Services Initiatives Committee. It's been roughly twelve months since our last update, and there's lots of good news to share with you. But before we begin, similar to last year, our neighbors in Waterloo are receiving a similar update at this committee this evening as well. Since establishing a formally joint services committee in two thousand and six, we pursued over seventy joint initiatives together, many of which of those continue as existing practice today. The balance of those were project-specific and have since been completed. Our goal as a committee is simple, to provide residents from both cities with more efficient municipal services wherever practical and possible. The JSIC was relaunched in two thousand and fifteen along with a refreshing of its Terms of Reference, and we've met annually over the last two years since then. Prior to our meeting, staff from each city identify possible opportunities where broader coordination may be possible, and these opportunities are typically found within day-to-day operations or within council-approved business plans. These opportunities are then scoped using a common template, and a shortlist of the most feasible are agreed upon by the senior leaders on the committee. The report before you this year highlights four such initiatives from the last twelve to eighteen months. The first is recycling infrastructure. The Area Public Works Group, which consists of department leads from the region of Waterloo as well as three local municipalities, have been working to better coordinate and identify standards for cycling infrastructure and maintenance. In fact, I'm even told that they're meeting this Friday. Work also continues on how to better coordinate external funding opportunities. While anticipated needs are varied between Kitchener and Waterloo, the agreed thinking is that a proof-of-concept approach, most likely through a third party, would be the most advantageous way to explore this opportunity further going forward in the future. One opportunity that presented itself outside of the committee's formal work plan was actually a proposal to host a board meeting of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. The Kitchener-Waterloo proposal was ultimately successful, and our two cities will welcome FCM delegates in September of two thousand and nineteen. Finally, as you know, Kitchener currently provides some after-hour support to the city of Waterloo through our Corporate Contact Center. Expanding this service to additional Waterloo divisions such as bylaw enforcement continues to be a keen area of interest for our committee. This work is ongoing with existing call volumes being tracked for planning purposes. Once complete, next steps would presumably involve developing a service-level agreement to accompany any implementation plan. Looking ahead at two thousand and eighteen, several new initiatives have also been identified. The first involves better understanding how both cities can work together to ensure that property assessments are act and fairly captured. One potential opportunity that's already been discussed in this regard is the sharing of a software program to better evaluate vulnerable properties. Both cities are also interested in looking for new ways to collaborate on stormwater management issues such as climate change adaptation, as well as reviewing each city's sanitary rebate program with an aim to better align both programs more closely. Last question for the two thousand and eighteen municipal election, there is once again renewed interest in group procurement for related equipment and services, and from what I've heard, discussions are already taking place about what additional procurement opportunities might be, including things like laptops, barcode scanners, and printing of voter identification It's also important to note that while the JSIC is focused on city-to-city initiatives, we do indeed look for broader opportunities on our two cities, and in recent years, this has included pursuing more local-regional initiatives that overlap with the region of Waterloo. Examples of this include the upgrades to the regional telecommunications infrastructure, which includes partners like Waterloo Regional Police Service, all fire departments in Grand River Transit. An additional example includes the $2.2 million contribution by the region on behalf of its local municipalities to the southwestern integrated fiber technology network, better known as SWIFT, to provide faster, more cost-effective fiber-based internet service to consumers. And finally, the LED replacement, streetlight replacement project, something many in this chamber have become quite familiar with. This particular local-regional initiative was approved in two thousand and sixteen and will be substantially completed by two thousand and seventeen, with participation by all local municipalities, certainly initiative of one of the largest of its kind in recent history. It includes the installation of approximately sixteen thousand lights in Kitchener and an additional eight thousand lights in Waterloo. In the case of Kitchener, that conversion is estimated to save us nearly one million dollars a year. By utilizing press releases, web content, annual reports, and joint services branding, we are indeed getting the word out about our cooperative relationship and the benefits it provides to both communities, advancing our goal of providing more seamless, practical, and efficient services to the residents of Kitchener and Waterloo. And with that, Mayor Verbanovic, I turn it back over to you.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Certainly informative and also very good to hear about the level of cooperation between our two communities, and in fact, while this is focused on Kitchener and Waterloo, we know that there are many examples of partnership that exist throughout our region as well. Several questions, who are you, and we'll start with Counselor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, and really, it's enlightening to see how much cooperation does take place. I think it's a good news to our citizens that for effort of efficiency that we're endeavoring to do this. And you mentioned a number of different projects. On the committee, has there ever been any consideration of having any political leadership on the committee to, you know, better strengthen and support these initiatives, and so that there's, you know, support from the governance aspect of it?
Certainly, back in two thousand and fifteen, when we relaunched the JSIC, we did take a long look at elements we could include in refreshing our Terms of Reference. At that time, it was felt from a practical standpoint, particularly since new initiatives do come up through the course of the year, that if it makes sense for both cities, we will pursue to be agile in that regard. We did not include local leadership at that time. Certainly, I think that it's something that could be entertained in the future, whether it be on an ad hoc basis or on a more permanent basis. The other thing I would add is we did think long and hard about how we would engage other area municipalities such as Cambridge in the future endeavor, any future endeavors we may pursue in that regard, and it's something we're definitely open to.
Right, no, at least between Kitchener and Waterloo, and this was a question that was posed to our citizens and, of course, in the city of Waterloo as well. If there is an aspect of interest and discussion of amalgamation, this is where my opinion lies. I think over time, we probably get there. I don't know when that will be, but we will get there, and the efforts that, you know, this committee provides, and obviously, this initiative for, you know, the joint services helps to align us towards that direction, and some political leadership may be beneficial over time as well, so just my comments.
Counselor Ionitis.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I was gonna ask, when are we amalgamating, Justin? But anyways...
The A-word. We're not allowed to say that around here. Go ahead.
My question is basically, given the cooperation, the collaboration that we have among our two cities, is there other areas in Canada and maybe Ontario that have this type of significant relationship with each other to help better, you know, provide services for their citizens?
Certainly, there are other examples in Ontario and across the country where municipalities engage in different relationships to exchange services on behalf of one another. Certainly, back in two thousand and fifteen, when we looked at relaunching the Joint Services Initiative Committee, I would dare say that on a local-to-local basis, the committee that we've established, that takes into other factors like our contiguous geography, the fact that we do consider ourselves twin cities, it's difficult to come by.
Okay. And as far as the amount, I can't recall if you had the amount of initiatives. I remember in years past, we've had the amount of initiatives that we were working on. Do you have that number again?
So, going back, if we go back to two thousand and six, when we formally established committee, we're up over seventy initiatives now. Some of those are existing practice still, as I'd mentioned. Others were project-specific and have long since been completed.
Okay, that's fabulous. And then, on top of that, can you even quantify how many initiatives that we even worked with, let's say, with the region as well? Is there a number there?
Certainly, within the last twelve months, I would say the three that I shared with you this evening, that, probably plus a few more, but I'd have to get back to you on specific numbers.
Okay, that's great. Well, keep up the great work with that team. Thank you.
Thanks.
I think probably the most significant one, Counselor Ionitis, is the shared use of the region's space in our operation center for their call center, as well as our use of the Legan software package that goes with it. Counselor Gazola, you're up next.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions coming out of your report that you sent to council. Could you just expand a little bit on this asset management, what's involved, or assessment management, what's involved there?
Sure. Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair. In fact, there's an issue paper in the operating budget package that speaks to this at length, and so I'd refer you to that. I think that the package was issued in the past couple of days. The bottom line is, a city has used a retired assessor to provide valuation expertise internally for the past many, many years. That assessor is retiring, and what we realize is that that's not a model that is sufficient based on the volume of our assessment base. The other thing that's changing is that the Assessment Review Board has changed their rules of practice, so they will no longer accept anyone who's not a licensed paralegal providing that service. And so, we see that there's a need for us to do more in that area, and it's an area that we can share costs with Waterloo, given their needs are the same, and we believe it's a good opportunity for partnership.
Yeah. In fact, it's an area that affects every municipality in the province, is it not? And are we doing anything at the AMO level with that? That's another question. The other thing I'd like a little, if you could expand upon, the southwestern fiber technology network. I really hadn't heard about that. What is that? What's involved, and what's it doing for the city of Kitchener? I understood we had fiber networks throughout the city at one point, throughout the region, and we sold it. So, is this starting over again, or...
So, SWIFT is essentially a co-op of primarily upper-tier municipalities from southern Ontario that have been organized through the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, and their mandate is to, by large, replace copper with fiber to drive out more reliable internet service across southern Ontario. They've received significant commitments from the federal and provincial government, and their return on investment ratio is essentially four to one. So, for the investment made by the local municipalities, they're guaranteeing that ratio in terms of infrastructure that's in turn invested in by private providers.
Could you give me one little example how it helps the cities of Kitchener and Waterloo?
If I offer an example, I would say, right now, there are primary service providers. We know who those tend to be. One of the goals of SWIFT is to introduce new service providers to the market, so the anticipated benefit to Kitchener and Waterloo would be to see more competitive pricing and more service options.
So, you're gonna give us somebody other than Rogers and Bell, is that right? I look forward to that. One final question. I know there's cooperation that's been going on for many years. You cited two thousand and six, but it actually goes back much further than that. One of the areas that I know we had often considered was trying to do some joint work with IT services. All our municipalities in the region make more and more use of IT, and there was questions or thoughts of combining that entire IT operation and parceling it out at somewhat, hopefully, lesser expense to each of the municipalities. Is that still in the works, or has that been set aside in the back burner?
Currently, there is a local IT Directors Group from each of the area municipalities. They do tend to focus on areas for greater collaboration where efficiencies and economies of scale can be created. As far as since the relaunch of the Joint Services Initiative Committee in two thousand and fifteen, no significant IT products have been brought to the table.
Okay. Actually, you make a good point that the IT people get together. I gather two, that our CAOs get together, and our financial people from all of the area municipalities, including the two cities, get together. So, there's a collaboration on a number of issues then. Thank you.
Mr. Chapman, you wanted to add something?
Through the chair, just to add to the response to your Counselor, to Counselor Gazola's question about IT, while we've not merged IT functions, the mayor alluded to it, we've had a great success record when one goes out for tender on software to open up the opportunity for others. So, recent examples are Integraf, our dispatching software, that will be consistent across the region. When we replaced Class, the area municipalities went on that together. Our CRM, Customer Relationship Management, is the same platform as the region, and so there seems to be a greater willingness to include others, and that reduces licensing cost and improves consistency.
Counselor Atherton.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Watkins. On page five B dash three, you talk about election equipment services. One of the things mentioned there is voter notification cards. It was my experience in a couple of elections where there were considerable problems with those cards. What you are working on will presumably help alleviate those shortcomings?
I can't speak personally specifically to that initiative. From what I understand, work on that is underway now, and the intent of that is to broaden the scope on purchasing power and the pooling of resources, to move beyond things like tabulators and to include new things like voter notification cards.
Okay. Thank you.
Our chief electoral officer would like to add some thoughts to this.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to add that in working together with Waterloo is trying to ensure that we get more timely delivery of the voter notification cards, so if we can work more collaboratively with Waterloo, hopefully not putting such a strain on the Canada Post system, and so hopefully ensuring that not only will we hopefully save some money on the actual cost of the printing of the VNCs, but also ensure better timely delivery of them.
Thank you. And one other quick question. I think I know the answer. There's nothing in here about the equipment you're working on, the election equipment, nothing to do with online voting, or...
No.
No? Okay, thank you.
Okay, those appear to be all the questions. Thank you very much, Justin.
Thank you.
Okay, well, now move on to items C and D, which are about some exciting awards that the cities receive. The first one is Michelle Drake and Darren Crop to present the Ontario Professional Planners Institute Award for Communications Public Education, recognizing the city's neighbor strategy, hashtag Love My Hood.
Good evening, Mayor Verbanovic and members of council. It is my pleasure to share the exciting news with you tonight about Love My Hood. On November first, the Ontario Professional Planners Institute announced the two thousand and seventeen winners of the Excellence in Planning Awards. These awards recognize innovation, creativity, professionalism, problem-solving, and communications in urban and community design, planning studies or reports, and public education. The awards are the best of the best in urban and rural planning across the province. Love My Hood received an Excellence in Planning Award in the communications and public education category in recognition of the city's efforts to ensure inclusive and meaningful public engagement. The approach started with the resident-led team and embraced the collective expertise of residents, volunteers, and city staff to communicate with and seek input from the public using out-of-the-box methods like our lemonade stands, our coloring books, a neighborhood party, and placemaking. I'd like to take this opportunity to once again acknowledge and thank our project team that was made up of residents, volunteers, community partners, and staff who collectively contributed nearly one thousand hours of their time to create Love My Hood. And with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Mayor to come forward to present the award on behalf of the city to the mayor for the Excellence in Planning Award in the communication and public education category.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Michael wants to do a hashtag Love My Hood tweet.
Awesome, and thank you, and congratulations to you and Darren and everyone who's been involved in the Love My Hood initiative. I think it has been tremendous and is garnering a lot of attention locally in the community and a lot of positive feedback, and it's great to see it being recognized provincially as well. Next, we have a correction in the title that was printed in the agenda. Next up, we have Tina Malone Wright, Brandon Sloan, Anna Lampanard to present the Ontario Professional Planners Institute Award for Community Planning and Development Studies Reports, recognizing the city's planning around Rapid Transit Stations' PARTS Central Plan. Oh, we are...
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I am happy to be here this evening to let you know that our plan, the PARTS Central Plan that you adopted or approved on May ninth, two thousand and sixteen, also won an Excellence in Planning Award, and it's quite an honor for us to receive this award. And I would like to acknowledge our project working team that participated and worked on this for over eighteen months, and some of them are in attendance this evening. Our project director, Brandon Sloan, our project sponsor, who couldn't be here, is Lampanard, and we had several city staff working on the award. We had Dana Edwards, Adam Clark, Michelle Drake, Julianne Van Westerholt...
Let's go stand up.
Justin Ridman, Cory Bloom, Leon Benfison, I don't think he could be here this evening, Sandra Bassanese, Yvonne Westerveld Cardoso, Greg McTaggart, Eric Reich, Mike Elliott, Nancy Steinfeld, and we had two outside consultants help us with this project as well. We have Graham Vincent on behalf of Dillon Consulting, and we had Sue Cumming, who did our community engagement for us of Cumming and Company. We'd also like to thank all the residents, neighbors, neighborhoods, stakeholders, business owners, and public agencies that provided their feedback and comments in the development of this PARTS plan. We could have done it without them. So, in that respect, I'd like to present the board to you. Mayor, please come forward.
And so, just on behalf of council, I will thank all of you for all of your hard work in terms of bringing the PARTS Central Plan forward for the city. This is an exciting time, I think, in our community as we await the start of the LRT becoming operationalized, and to know that we have done so much proactive work from a planning perspective to take advantage of what opportunities the community will be presented with as a result of that is exciting, and it's really due to the great partners and staff and community members that have been part of this. So, thank you very much. We'll now move into delegations. I'd like your mind delegations that they have five minutes to make their presentation, and we'll start with six A. Notice has been given for any member of the public to speak for or against a bylaw to close the public highway known as an unnamed public lane lying west of River Road between lots twenty-three and twenty-four, Plan nine thirty-seven, listed as items eleven A and fourteen A. Is there anybody here to speak with respect to the renaming of this laneway west of River Road? Going once? Anybody here for this laneway? Going twice? And going three times? If not, I will ask that somebody move for second and third reading of that laneway. Move by Counselor Fernandez, seconded by Counselor Ionitis. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Notice has also been given for any member of the public to speak for or against a bylaw to close and convey part of the public highway known as Plains Road, listed as items eleven B and fourteen B on the agenda. Anybody here with respect to the Plains Road issue? Going once? Plains Road going twice? And Plains Road going three times? There not being anybody, does somebody want to move those? Move by Counselor Galloway Seetlock, seconded by Counselor Schneider. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. We'll now move to item C. Notice has been given for any member of the public to speak for or against a bylaw to name a private road as Chickaby Hills Drive, listed as items eleven C and fourteen C. Is anybody here with respect to the naming of Chickaby Hills Drive? Going once? Going twice? Chickaby Hills Drive going a third time? There isn't? Does somebody want to move that? Move by Counselor Schneider, seconded by Counselor Ionitis. Moved by Councillor Schneider, seconded by Councillor Aynettis. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We do now have two delegations here with respect to the Belgage Medical Arts Pylon sign, Mr. Akram Ibrahim and Mr. Gary Fitz Henry. So I'll deal with that. Are you both here just to speak in favor of it? Did you want to speak or only we have questions? Only questions? Okay. And so this is item on committee of the whole. Okay. Moved by Councillor Fernandez, is it seconded? Councillor Marsh, any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. That's been approved. Thank you. And now we will then move on to item D, which is delegations with respect to 64 Margaret Ave., listed as Item 8A under Unfinished Business. And we have two delegations, Ms. Vanessa Hicks representing V of Development, followed by Mr. Hal Jaeger. Ms. Hicks. Welcome, Ms. Hicks.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Verbenovic and members of council. My name is Vanessa Hicks and I am a heritage planner with MHBC Planning. MHBC has been retained by their proponent to conduct a heritage impact assessment for the proposed development at 64 Margaret Ave. and 217, 225, and 229 Victoria Street North. I'm joined here today with Pierre Chauvin, who is coordinating the required planning applications for the proposed development whom I may call upon later if I need help answering questions. The subject lands are located east of Victoria Street North, north of Margaret Ave. A portion of the subject lands located at 64 Margaret Ave. are located within the boundary of the Heritage Conservation District and is noted in blue on this slide. The footprint of the proposed six-story building and the two-and-a-half-story building are indicated on this slide in gray. The purpose of our heritage impact assessment report was to identify potential impacts to heritage resources which may result of the proposed development. This includes impacts related to portions of the development located within as well as adjacent to the Heritage Conservation District. Our assessment reviewed the policies of the Civic Center Heritage Conservation District Plan. It's hard to say. Civic Center Heritage Conservation District Plan, that's a method. In order to determine whether the portion of the development located within the district conforms to the policies of the district plan regarding new development. The two-and-a-half-story building is located in the Heritage Conservation District and is therefore subject to the policies of the district plan. The proposed six-story building along Victoria Street North is located adjacent to the district and is therefore not subject to the policies of the plan. While this is true, plan prescribes that higher-density redevelopment opportunities should be focused at the perimeter of or outside the district along the Victoria Street mixed-use corridor. Our report evaluated the impact of the six-story building on the adjacent Heritage Conservation District as required by provincial policy statement. Our analysis referred to the criteria for recognizing potential adverse impacts identified by the Ministry of Tourism, Culture, and Sport, which includes the following: destruction of significant heritage buildings, alteration of heritage features, shadows that alter the character of a heritage feature, isolation of a heritage feature from its surrounding environment, obstruction of significant views, change in land use, and land disturbances which may affect archaeological resources. Our analysis concluded that the construction of the six-story building located adjacent to the district will not result in the demolition or alteration of any buildings of significant cultural heritage value or interest. The buildings located along Victoria Street North were purposely excluded from the district as they were found to be less architecturally significant than those located within the district. The proposed development will not result in shadows that have an adverse impact on the identified attributes and heritage character of the district. It will not result in the isolation of heritage features within the district from their context. It will not obstruct any identified significant views within the district, as significant views looking into the district along Margaret Ave. and Ellen Street West from Victoria Street will be maintained. It will not result in a change of land use as it will remain residential in nature, and the property has not been identified as containing significant archaeological resources. Our assessment also concluded that the proposed two-and-a-half-story building fronting Margaret Ave. conforms to the policies of the Heritage Conservation District regarding new development, which includes, but does not limit to, scale, mass, design, and materials. The findings of our impact assessment were presented to the City of Kitchener Heritage Advisory Committee on April 4, 2017. The Heritage Advisory Committee subsequently reviewed the required heritage permit application for the portion of the proposed development within the district on October 3, 2017. It was at this meeting that the Heritage Advisory Committee approved the heritage permit application for the proposed development with conditions. I'm here in support of this application and encourage you to endorse the recommendations made by the Heritage Committee. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions related to our heritage impact assessment that you may have.
Okay. We do have some questions for you, Councillor Marsh.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Just a question around one of the two conditions of the heritage permit regarding the building materials. So was there much discussion about specific types of building materials at the Heritage Kitchener meeting? And can you describe some of the... I'm specifically interested in building materials that are modern versus ones that are in line with heritage materials.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor. There were many conversations regarding materials for both the building within the district and outside of the Heritage Conservation District. The building that is located within the boundary of the Heritage Conservation District is subject to the policies of the plan, which prescribes that the buildings within the district are needed complimentary to the buildings within that particular character. And our client has worked in cooperation with city staff to ensure that those building materials are very much in keeping with the character of the district, which includes cedar-like shingles and things of that nature. The building which is located outside of the Heritage Conservation District is comprised of more modern materials and is not subject to the policies of the plan, so the minute considerations of materials are less of a heritage nature.
Right. And it's that six-story building that I'm wondering about, because the two-and-a-half story building does seem to comply fully. But the six-story building is in fact, in part, at least, just a little bit in that heritage district, as you showed on your version, your map. So was there any consideration to that, the building face that faces into the heritage district to have materials that are not modern, so that we would see the heritage district not be isolated from... or the building not isolate the heritage district from itself?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Modern materials are nothing to be afraid of in a heritage conservation district. In fact, many heritage conservation district plans speak quite favorably in regards to modern materials, as long as they're used appropriately.
Okay. Thank you. So would corrugated metal siding be something that would be appropriate in a heritage district?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The building's not located... the majority of the building, in fact, a very, very small portion of that building is located within the Heritage Conservation District. Because the majority of the building isn't located within the Heritage Conservation District, it's, again, not subject to the policy of the plan. And in our opinion, the chosen materials for the building will not result in any adverse impacts to the district, either adjacent or that slight portion which is within the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Fernandez.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Hicks, can you go back to the map that showed the two buildings? Right. Thank you. So I see the building on 64 Margaret is very long and narrow. What is going to be around that building? Is it parking lot? Is it green space? What is that going to be?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Parking is provided through a laneway to, I guess that would be east, to the east of that building. So is there a pointer on this? No. Sorry. There's no pointer. But just below that building, there's a laneway, and the majority of that blank space that's kind of just below the yellow portion, which is where the six-story building is going, that is parking. And there's also spaces for landscaping in that area as well, around that two-and-a-half story building.
Okay. So there would be access for that two-and-a-half-story building from Victoria Street or from Margaret Ave.?
Access to both buildings will be located off of Margaret Ave.
Off Margaret Ave. Okay. And is there anything in the Heritage District, Conservation District guidelines that talks about the view from the community, from the Civic Center Neighborhood, HCD, the view looking out of the district? Is there anything that talks about that? I know that in the upper Doom Conservation District, there is some reference to the views and the vistas of the way people would be looking out of the district and into the district. Is there anything in this neighborhood that speaks to that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there are two identified views within the general context of this proposed development. They are both located at the intersection of Victoria Street North, looking into the district, along Margaret Ave. And the second is located at the intersection of Victoria Street North, looking into the district, at the intersection of Victoria Street North and Ellen.
Okay. So the view of... what is the height of the buildings along Ellen Street, right there at Ellen and Victoria? Are they two-story, three-story?
It varies. Generally, two-story to two-and-a-half story, approximately.
Okay. So this building is six... the building in the yellow area is a six-story building?
That's correct.
And it is residential?
Yes, it is residential. It's a multiple residential building.
Okay. All right. That's all the questions I have at this moment. Thank you.
Councillor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions, Ms. Hicks. As a planner, do you pay particular attention to a development like this on the edge of a heritage area? Do you care about that at all?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Provincial policy statement requires us to review any impacts to a heritage property which is directionally adjacent, contiguous, contiguous, excuse me. So yes, certainly, we do consider that. And we looked at that in quite a lot of depth in our heritage impact assessment report.
And again, as a planner, do you think this building, the one on Victoria Street, do you think it overpowers the heritage area in any way, shape, or form?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. My professional opinion, no. I see no adverse impacts to the heritage district as a result of the construction of this proposed six-story building.
The building went up from 16.5 meters to 21.5. That's a third higher. You still don't think that overlooks the heritage area or has an impact on that area?
Correct.
And it's also, in my understanding, it's closer to the Ellen Street homes and the street, and that too has no impact?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councillor Singh.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, myself, Councillor Gazova, and Councillor Aynettis had the benefit of seeing some of the design layout from the Heritage Committee. And I don't know if you want to go into details on that, but from what I can recall, 64 accents the heritage attributes, and it's quite respectful to that form. Is that correct? And that's going to carry on with the same intent?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there has been quite a lot of attention to detail put in with the proposed two-and-a-half story building within the district.
That's not just materials, but design as well?
Certainly. In fact, there was a historic building located in the general location of the proposed two-and-a-half story building. And this building was known as the Breithub House. And the scale, massing, and details of this former historic building, which was regrettably lost a number of years ago, has been taken into consideration so that the proposed design of this building mimics some of those aspects, but with a more appropriate, modern aspect.
Okay. And the height is, of course, going to be more sensitive to the streetscape on Margaret Ave. And the height of the six-story building is imposing on Victoria Street?
Certainly, the height is complimentary to the district. The buildings in this particular context are generally two-and-a-half-story buildings. And the district plan supports buildings in a height of two to four stories within this Victoria Street interface area within the district.
But again, on 64, it's only two-and-a-half story?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Fernandez, follow up questions?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, and this popped up when I heard Councillor Etherington. Did I hear him talk about a higher-story building? Was that the original plan, and now it's been brought down to six? Or is it still at higher than six?
The building is proposed for six stories. I believe it's 21.6 meters.
Oh, I see. Okay. So he was referring to the height of the building as opposed to the floors, like the stories?
The total stories is six stories.
Okay. Six stories. Would you be able to go back to the picture of the houses?
Correct.
Do you have a picture of the houses where the Breithub House was located on Margaret Ave.?
It was actually located where the long rectangular building footprint is in blue. It was almost exactly in that same location.
Okay. And what is that square behind 225, right near the 64?
That is a... I've been in that building. It is a very rundown structure, hopefully not residential, but it looked to me like a shed slash garage.
Okay. How many variances are being or have been requested for the building on Victoria Street?
My colleague Pierre would be better able to answer that, but I believe it's five total variances.
Okay. So we're talking about setback from the sides of the buildings, as well as the height, as well as the distance from the district, the 64?
The variance is required is a slight reduction in parking, side yard setback, front yard setback, and building height, and I believe a rear yard setback as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for indulging those extra questions.
No problem. Now, those appear to be all the questions for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So our next delegation is Mr. Hal Jaeger. Welcome, Mr. Jaeger.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councillors. My name is Hal Jaeger and a resident of Kitchener, residing on Margaret Ave. in the Civic Center Neighborhood Heritage Conservation District. This evening, I will abbreviate the name of the district to the Heritage Conservation District. I ask you to amend the heritage permit application, HPA 2017V031. Please know that I support intensification, and specifically within walking distance of the light rail transit zone. I assert that these objectives should be pursued within the limits of the Heritage Conservation District Plan. City staff performed admirably in cooperation with the developer in proposing a neighborhood-appropriate two-and-a-half-story, 17-unit building fronting on Margaret Ave. Staff and the developer should be commended. I believe city council should be especially concerned about the following two aspects of the heritage permit application and should amend the application accordingly. I would first like to draw your attention to the proposed materials for the exterior of both the Margaret-facing building and Victoria-facing building. The proposed materials include dark metal siding, in some instances, corrugated metal siding. Metal siding is architecturally foreign to the Heritage Conservation District and specifically censured in the Heritage Conservation District. "materials and colors that represent the texture and palette of the Civic Center Neighborhood." In case one thinks that the argument pertains to only the two-and-a-half story building, section 2.2 of the plan states that properties adjacent to the Heritage Conservation District are also subject to the plan and must not, quote, "have a negative impact on the heritage resources within the district." While these arguments address adjacency, please note that a small section of the rear of the proposed 21.6-meter-high building is located within the Heritage District, Heritage Conservation District. Please do not permit metal siding to be applied to any portion of the buildings which may be seen from a perspective within the Heritage Conservation District. The second concern is the proposed height of the building facing Victoria Street. The proposal calls for a 21.6-meter-high building, which would exceed city council's established zoning height limit of 16.5 meters. This limit respects the need to increase building height gradually coming out of the Heritage Conservation District. This limit preserves the character of the heritage neighborhood. Beyond the harm that this application threatens the Heritage Conservation District, disregarding the deliberately set 16.5-meter-height limit could constitute a problematic precedent. Please ensure that the building height preserves the character of the Heritage Conservation District by respecting the existing zoning. The Heritage Conservation District is a gift from our forbears to all citizens of Kitchener. The pleasure of strolling through the neighborhood and enjoying the architecture of the late 1800s and early 1900s should be available to all of Kitchener's residents forever. Much of our architectural heritage in this neighborhood has already been lost, and we cannot afford further loss. I appreciate city staff efforts and the developers' cooperation in making this application more appropriate for the Heritage Conservation District. It is now up to you to amend the application and permit their efforts to succeed. Thank you.
Okay, we have several questions for you. Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Couple of questions. So, what I'm understanding from what you're saying is that the front of the building on Margaret Avenue is expected in the design to have corrugated metal siding? So the building, that's the two-story building that's going to be facing Margaret Avenue will have metal siding? Is that what you said?
Metal siding, yes. I do not believe it calls for corrugated.
Okay, so, I apologize, I misunderstood. And the building on Victoria, around the entire building, I would imagine, that would also be metal siding?
It does call for metal siding, and some of it calls for corrugated.
Okay. And that would be viewed from Ellen Street and from anywhere on Margaret Avenue, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, can you tell me how, if you were asked, if someone's asking you, how would you respond? If, let's shorten it to CCHCP, that that area needs to yield to the city's growth needs? How would you respond to a question like that?
It's a good question, and I have some thoughts. I would say that the Heritage Conservation District Plan has already taken into account some of the city's growth needs by deliberately leaving out some of the homes on Victoria Street North, just outside of the district and outside of the plan, so that they could be redeveloped more easily. And I should note that in the portion of Victoria Street that we are discussing, between Margaret and Ellen, there is a Group B heritage home that would be demolished to give way to this application's construction. Does the Heritage Conservation District need to yield further to the city's growth needs? I would say no. So much careful work went into the creation of the Heritage Conservation District Plan, there will always be development pressures on our heritage resources. Each time we yield, we are left with less, and there is no reversing the losses.
So how long have you lived in this district?
I'm sorry?
How long have you lived in this district?
Less than a year.
Less than a year. So, can you help me understand one of the reasons why you purchased in this area?
Absolutely. I thought the neighborhood was gorgeous, and I, in fact, even did pay careful attention to the zoning, and that heightment reassured me that I was moving into a neighborhood that was going to continue to respect the building that I was going to buy. I did understand that there were going to be many impositions upon me as an owner and how I would have to maintain my building for the benefit of the community. I'm happy to do so. I think the exterior of these buildings is a benefit for the entire community. I'm just being owned by the building, I'm the servant to the building, not the owner.
Okay. And if you were to walk down Margaret Avenue and you were to view, looking out towards Victoria Street, what would you hope to see?
Toward Victoria Street? There's some beautiful buildings, the one right beside the proposed new structure of the two-and-a-half, there's a gorgeous building there, Group A heritage building, and I think how it is framed is very important to the street. And having it framed with a big backdrop that will, I do fear, will overpower it. And that's something I would really like to preserve.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in and answering my questions.
Thank you.
Counselor Marsh, you're up next.
Thank you, thank you, Hal, for your presentation. Now, when you were at a neighborhood meeting with many neighbors, did you get a sense that there are other neighbors who would agree with your request here tonight? Are you representing other neighbors as well?
We circulated a petition among the neighbors before notice of the Committee of Adjustment meeting, and about 40 neighbors signed the petition, objecting to the height. I feel like the, my capacity to understand the process here in Kitchener and that there is a heritage discussion on this, that took us some more time, and we didn't have enough time to both understand our own, to read the paper, to understand what it meant, and to discuss it further with neighbors. But I'm sure that there is a lot more interest.
Yes, okay, thank you. And so the requests that you've brought forward tonight regarding the materials, as well as the height limitations, might be seen to be more a committee of, specifically the height, might be seen to be more of a committee of adjustment decision rather than a council decision? So, would you be, would you be amenable to having something at least noted in the minutes, if there were not a motion to limit the height, for us to make sure that it is noted that the Committee of Adjustment decision is not to take this heritage permit approval as indication that we agree with the height?
I would certainly hope that the Committee of Adjustment does not take anything said here as an approval regarding height.
Okay, thank you. I'll have a motion, a motion to, just an amendment at the appropriate time.
Okay, I will, I will come to you after the report gets brought forward. Counselor Allen.
Through you, Mr. Chair. To Mr. Jaeger. Mr. Jaeger, when you answered that question about paying attention to the height of buildings in the neighborhood when you bought your house, were you referring to the building on Victoria?
Yes.
Okay. And you say you're not against intensification?
I support it.
Right, that's what I thought. And you mentioned also the meeting and the, and I've seen this referred to in several articles, the technical language of planners that the average Joe has difficulty understanding. Is that the impression you came away from at those meetings?
I'm not trying to say that it is difficult, but the documents are lengthy and the process is not obvious to an outsider. So, for the neighbors and myself to begin entering into this discussion, there is some amount of work.
You'd need time to digest.
Need lots of time. More time would be more helpful.
Thank you.
And Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, I don't have a question of the delegate, but I do understand.
Okay. That's fine, actually, we don't have any further questions of you, sir.
Thank you.
So go ahead, Counselor Gazola.
Thank you. I was unable to attend that meeting on October 3rd. I got stuck at the airport in Montreal, and I wasn't at the meeting. I tend to agree with what the delegate is saying in that it changes the look of the neighborhood. So I'm just curious as to how staff, when it was brought to the committee, how staff reconciled this question? What was staff's position on it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Staff's position was that they recommended approval of the application, subject to two conditions. One was a standard condition that requires the building permit drawings to be reviewed to ensure that they're consistent with the heritage permit drawings. And the second condition was a requirement that the applicant submit the details of the proposed building materials and colors to city staff for final approval prior to issuance of a building permit.
Our staff, do staff go along with building material that's being, that's going to be used, and also with the height? The height would, is quite a bit above what those buildings are in the area. Now, the building that has the height is outside the area. Is that, is that the reason you support that, or?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll deal with those two items separately. So with respect to the proposed materials, staff did work through a number of different variations of the design of the building, including the proposed materials. And when that design shifted to a more modern or contemporary design, staff were supportive of the introduction of metal. On the two-and-a-half story building, the proposed metal is a horizontal shiplap metal siding, which would be in keeping with the design of similar horizontal siding that would be original to the district, like a wood siding. When it came to the six-story building, the primary consideration of staff was that the building is largely outside of the Heritage Conservation District, and that by pushing that mass to Victoria Street, it's a fairly rectangular mass, and we need to use building materials as well as colors to break up the mass of that building, to introduce different textures. And given that the proposed siding or the use of the corrugated metal is posed on the internal wall of the balcony areas behind a guard and facing the rear of properties in a heritage district, where the primary interest in a heritage district is what can be seen from the public realm, not the rear private realm, staff were supportive of those materials. In terms of the height, height was definitely considered, as Ms. Hicks shared earlier, with the property being adjacent to the heritage district. We are required to ensure that there are no impacts, or that if there are impacts, they are mitigated. One of the principles we use is we call the 45-degree angular plane. That principle is met from the rear face of the six-story building, looking into the heritage district.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Etherington, you're up next.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, to staff. Just because I'm curious about the history of the Bright Up House, can you tell me what happened to the Bright Up House? Why was it demolished in the first place?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, I don't know the details. It was before my time. I am aware that the building was demolished in 2003, but the exact reasons, I don't know.
Did the city own that house?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I do, I'm not, I'm not familiar with who owned it at the time it was demolished.
Thank you.
Counselor Marsh.
Thank you. Question from Ms. Drake, just wondering, I want to follow up on a comment made by one of the delegates. Just, is corrugated metal siding prohibited in a heritage district?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no. The use of metal or corrugated metal siding is not prohibited in the heritage district. The district does seek to broader language around compatibility using materials, textures, and color palettes that are complementary to the district.
Okay. And in previous heritage impact assessments or heritage permits, have, has staff regularly allowed modern building materials that, similar to the ones that are being proposed in this application?
Through you, Ms. Mayor, I would advise, staff have not regularly supported the use of those materials, but to be fair, staff also haven't received applications that have proposed those types of materials.
Okay, so this is, is this an unusual case then?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that the use of metal is not unusual. It definitely has been used in heritage districts before, either pre-heritage district or as part of alterations that are made as part of the heritage permit process. To the best of my knowledge, the use of a corrugated metal siding would be the first. However, again, to clarify, that particular building material is not being used within the district.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, there don't appear to be any other questions or comments. Which, who from council is bringing forward the heritage? Counselor Ionettis? Counselor Ionettis? Okay, you're bringing forward the recommendation as it's printed? It's number eight in the agenda? So you're moving the recommendation as printed?
So it's been moved by myself, excuse me, it's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Singh, that we approve Heritage Permit Application, HPA 2017 V031 on 64 Margaret Ave.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded, and now Counselor Marsh, you indicated you wanted to make an amendment?
You know, I really feel for the residents in this heritage district, and I, as their ward counselor, have listened to some of their concerns. Not everyone has the exact same position as the delegate tonight, but many do, from my understanding. And nevertheless, I can't bring forward a motion to not approve metal siding when those materials have been used in other cases. However, and same with the height, I really feel that the height is too high, personally, but I don't feel that this is the venue to put any height restrictions on. I believe that's a committee of adjustment decision. And so what I just want to add to the motion is a note that approval of this Heritage Permit Application is not a comment on the proposed variance in height, just to ensure that any, any committee of adjustment member who is looking at this approval is not taking a cue from council that, that council is commenting on the height variance.
Okay, thank you. So you're adding that, though, to the recommendation? Okay, is there a seconder for that? Counselor Fernandez is seconding it? Okay, so I will deal with that as a amendment at the appropriate time. Several people in the queue. Counselor Etherington.
For comments, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, that's fine.
On both the motion and the amendment? On both the motion and the amendment, to me, this is another example of a developer nibbling away at the edge of a beautiful heritage area, one of our best, in the name of intensive occasion. After we've repeatedly been told by our planners that they are determined to protect, protect the character of our older neighborhoods. Residents are on record saying they do not oppose intensification along Victoria, but they oppose this development spiraling into or overlooking a heritage area that we should be protecting. And in my opinion, we are committed to protect. I'd like to see more work done to lower the height of the building on Victoria, and attempting to meet what to me is a legitimate request of residents who bought homes in that heritage area. And I don't think, referring to the amendment, I don't think, as, I do not think that this council should, I don't know how else to say it, should we even dodge that decision? The buck stops here. We should not try to pass this back to the committee of adjustment. We should make the decision to reduce the height of that building and give residents some satisfaction. For both of those reasons, I'm going to vote against this proposal, because, as I said, it represents another attempt to set a development precedent on the edge and inside a heritage area. In my opinion, it represents open season on are meant to be protected heritage communities. And I think this will be the first of several that you're going to see coming before us as we try to combine heritage areas and areas like them with intensification. There is a balance there, but to me, this is not the correct balance.
Thank you. Counselor Gazola?
I have a question of staff before I go. Another, of different staff.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to know, is there, is there any planning issue that does not allow us to allow a six-story building there? I know we recently looked at the neighborhood and the older neighborhoods as to what height we would try to restrict buildings. Where does that sit? And how does this sit in comparison to what we were looking at there? And my basic question is, is there anything now that we have on the books that, that does not allow a six-story building there?
Who from staff compares with that? Go ahead, Ms. Drake.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I can advise that the existing zoning that is in place does restrict the height of the building, and that would be why you've heard Counselor Marsh and others speak to the committee of adjustment and the proposed variances in height that are required to facilitate this development. However, with that being said, I would point out to council that the recently approved parts plan includes the lands that front Victoria Street, and the proposed maximum height for those lands through that policy work is 24 meters. So that particular height limit is not yet in place. It still needs to go through a secondary plan, official plan process, as well as a zoning process. But at present, staff will be working to implement that direction based on the approved parts plan.
Also, Ms. Drake, can you please clarify what happens if this heritage permit application is denied this evening?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If, if the heritage permit is refused, the applicant has the right to appeal council's decision to the Ontario Municipal Board. Should council approve the application, or approve the application with conditions, the members of the public do not have any rights of appeal.
Okay. And also, if I may, if another member of council has a, an agent has indicated, such as Counselor, Counselor Etherington has indicated that he doesn't approve of height, so make an amendment. Like, that's what I, I suggest. I mean, we can talk at length about our opinions, but if you want to make an amendment, make an amendment.
Thank you. So again, I feel like we're seeing another challenge to a heritage district. And it concerns me that the possibility of this building, although, you know, just slightly outside of the heritage district, is going to be viewed from the heritage district. It's not that different than when at Dune Conservation District, we had a building that was being located, I stand corrected if I have the address wrong, but 215 Old Carriage. And we battled with that owner to reduce the height, because the height could be viewed from the heritage district. This is the same kind of situation. So we, we can't say yes in this situation, where we said no in another heritage district. So I think we have to sort of work with the same principles. We're trying to protect our heritage. We're trying to protect the view of our heritage. So, you know, Counselor Marsh has sort of thrown down the, the challenge, and I would be more than happy to put the amendment at a three-story building, which I think would be, fall nice in line with what is existing along some parts of Victoria Street. I think it would also sit nicely behind the two-story, 2.5-story building that is there now. I expect that clerks will ask me to write that out, but that would be my amendment to the, the motion, the recommendation that was put forward by Counselor Ainaitis.
Go ahead, Counselor Etherington.
To Counselor Marsh, the only reason I did not do that is because this is in your ward. I think it's your responsibility to do that.
Okay. That wasn't a point of order, but...
I still have a couple of minutes.
That's fine. Your amendment, yeah, I guess I can take both amendments, but I will say that one of the things I think we do need to be careful about is that the issue of the height is something that is, has, is the responsibility of the committee of adjustment. So I don't know that it's appropriate for us, and I would look for some, some staff clarification or direction. I don't think it's appropriate for us to be dealing with something that's in the purview of, of another body that council has appointed. Mr. May, can you help us out with that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's, that's exactly what, what I'm going to indicate to members of council. The only decision before you today is related to the heritage permit application. You have already delegated authority for variances to the committee of adjustment, and I think you should be very cautious about starting to usurp that authority and make specific recommendations.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Fernandez, back to you.
Okay, so I might misunderstand then that, I cannot put forward an amendment to the height, but it will be recorded within the minutes, that at least one on council and possibly others are interested, very interested in seeing the committee of adjustment review the height of the building. Is that appropriate?
So I, I guess what I would suggest to you is there's an amendment on the floor to add the wording that Counselor Marsh has proposed, and that wording is not taking a position on the, the height. It's allowing the committee of adjustment to do their work, and not to, I think what, what the motion is trying to do is simply to not have them take the approval of, the potential approval of the heritage permit application as a sign that council supports the height, that, but rather that the committee should consider the facts before them, as they would with any other application, and make a determination based on that.
Okay, I can, I can understand that. I'll just wrap up, because I've lost a few of my minutes, but I think...
Don't worry, I'll give you more time.
It's all right. I, I think I've made my point. We, we are slowly chipping away at our heritage districts. Yes, we need to intensify, but there are ways to intensify, to keep the, the integrity of our heritage districts, to maintain our, our conservation districts. The regulations and policies we put in place, we put them in place for a reason. And to ignore them, or to try and dance around them, is unfair to our forefathers and to the people who put those, and those regulations and policies in place. And I hope that the committee of adjustment will take a really sincere look at the height of this building and do their due diligence.
Counselor Ainaitis?
Thank you, Mayor Verban. I have the floor. I guess, I was going to ask a question to the staff regarding with this, with Counselor Marsh's amendment, and I can understand her perspective on this, but the way I look at this, to me, this is basically prejudicing committee of adjustments' process into what council thinks is the appropriate height variance, which is, I cannot, I cannot support that. As far as comments I've heard with regards to height and all that, as I mentioned in that heritage committee, kitty-corner to this property, there is a four-story building right across kitty-corner to this, on Margaret Avenue, and that's never been mentioned. So I don't think height is, is a, is a big aspect as it is. And what I've been hearing is, I've been hearing another chip at the heritage district. Well, I sort of seem to think this is another aspect. I've heard reverse blockbusting before. I think this is, this is, I mean, blockbusting, I think this is reverse blockbusting. And using every, every kind of angle to, to stop, to stop a development that I think is very appropriate, that's had heritage impact assessment done. Our heritage staff have approved. I don't have any issue with this, with this proposal. And I, I think that it's a dangerous precedent, and what we're doing is trying to get in the nitty-gritty of this. So I would wholeheartedly hope everyone supports the heritage application to this.
Counselor Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With what was presented before the heritage committee, and what's been explained to council, I see an effort being made that doesn't necessarily infringe on the heritage district or its attributes there, or takes away from the neighborhood, but I think it's aspect of enhancement. A lot of efforts been made to incorporate design that brings back essence of what the, the building was on, the house on Margaret Ave. I think enough is being said on that aspect. When you consider the height, which is imposing on Victoria Street, that is a major arterial network to our city as a, as an entry point. We want good development that is respectful for the neighborhood, which, from what I've heard, and from what's been recommended from the planning staff and heritage staff, seems to be, measures will be taken to ensure that the materials that are on are appropriate for outlining area of a heritage district. So I, I think it really comes down to opposition for the sake of opposition. I don't want to say that, you know, negate the, the passion, but we do have a proposal that seems to take all the necessary steps to be sensitive. And I think we have to acknowledge that aspect, and leave the remaining decisions through heritage committee, through the heritage staff, and the committee of, committee of variant, committee of adjustment for the additional variances that are necessary. But from what's before us, I think it's, it's very palatable, and something that I'm comfortable supporting, and encourage others to do the same.
Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I wanted, I first have a question of Counselor Fernandez, or anybody else around the horseshoe. You brought up the situation down in Dune, where the, the height of the building was, the neighborhood was not happy with. But did council make a, pass any resolution, or was it, I thought that somehow the builder there, who was working, were persuaded to lower the height of the building. And the reason I ask that, I'm just wondering if this is worth, if that were the case, is it worth deferring this situation to see if anyone can, can go in that direction? I don't think that was a direction of council to deal with the height.
Counselor Fernandez?
You're texting my memory on the details of that, but I, there was a lot of back and forth. There was a lot of meetings, both public meetings and community meetings. I would like to say that, if I remember correctly, and I know that Counselor, a former regional councillor, Helvam, is in the audience, and she may remember better than me, there was, the owner of the land eventually decided to lower the building height. But that was due to a lot of pressure from staff, from myself, and from the community.
Okay. You saw the floor, Counselor Gazola. Is that it?
Well, that's, you know, I, if there could be some work here, I would, I would ask for deferral, but I can't.
Okay. Ms. Drake, you want to add something?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to respond to Counselor Gazola's comment about deferral. I shared this at the previous council meeting, that under the Ontario Heritage Act, heritage permits are required to be processed within 90 days. And if the, if a non-decision within that time period is considered an approval, this is the last regularly scheduled council meeting before that 90 days would come up.
Okay, that's fine. That answered my question. That's fine. I have a, I will make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. There are two, there are two questions here, and one of them is the height, and the other is, is the building materials. And I, the height, really, I guess, is something that we have no jurisdiction over in this particular situation. And whether, I don't, I can, I can see what the concern of the neighborhood, and I can agree with where they're going, but we really have no jurisdiction. So it's not, it's not a question of either asking us to support it or not to support it. So on the second part, on the building materials, I'm satisfied with the answer that staff have given us. And it all deals with, with our conservation districts is maintaining the view that we have. And in this particular case, I think they've, they've pointed out that even though it's a bit of a variance in the materials they're using, and that they, they feel that it will not harm the view, and therefore the integrity of the conservation district. So I want to underline, another part of that whole scenario is in the way our staff works very closely with, with people that are wanting to make changes in heritage districts, as to how closely they work to try to work something out. And I think that in, in what's coming forward here is a, is a good example of how our staff do try to do everything to, to get people who want to make changes to their property in heritage districts. So for those two reasons, I will, I will support the amendment if that sort of, if we have any right to send the message that we're not happy with, with the height. I don't know that we do. But I will also support the remainder of the recommendation. And I ask, I'd like a recorded vote.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, oh, sorry, Counselor Marsh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to...
Yeah, I just wanna thank the staff who have worked very hard on this application for many, many months ahead of us looking at it. And I also wanna commend the neighbors who all came out on a, on a dreary fall evening. We had over 35 people come out from the neighborhood. And they were so respectful and so really just doing their best to, to seek a way of having some consensus on this development that would allow the intensification that everyone agrees is needed in our city to be complementary to their precious heritage district neighborhood. I'm not convinced that this development proposal is, has met all those needs that were identified. However, I am asking council to just, just help us signal to the Committee of Adjustment, we're not actually commenting that we approve or disapprove of, of the height. And that is, that is why I just wanted to have it noted in the minutes. And I, I am also so happy that the, the motion includes a little condition, that building materials and colors must be approved by our heritage planning staff, because I have confidence in our heritage planning staff that these will be complementary to, to the heritage district.
Okay, if there aren't any further comments, I will, I'll just make a couple of comments myself. I will be supporting the recommendation before us, and I will also support the, the amendment. I think a lot of work has been done to get the application to this point. And as has been noted by Counselor Marsh and others, our, our heritage staff are recommending this. I do see the developer in the audience this evening, and I would, you know, urge him, both in terms of this development and others in the future, to, as much as possible, consider the, the input of residences, of residents particularly in areas like heritage neighborhoods, because I think that's extremely important as we try find the balance between preserving heritage while also ensuring new development and intensification takes place and is accepted by, by, by the community. I think that, in the long run, only builds for better and stronger neighborhoods. I'm supporting the amendment because I, I think it is important that the Committee of Adjustment has the rein to consider all of the facts being brought before them by both the resident, sorry, by the applicant, rather, and the surrounding residents, and considers their decision based on the weight of the arguments before them, and that they don't consider this, this approval as any, in any way as being a, an endorsement of, of the proposal in terms of the height issue going, going forward. So with that, I'll deal with the amendment first, and recorded votes have been called. So we'll deal with the amendment. Those in favor, those opposed, and the amendment carries. And then we'll deal with the original motion, recorded vote, as amended. Those in favor, those opposed, and the recommendation is approved. Okay, thank you very much, everyone, on that. I see there, oh, okay. We're here as part of that. So we will now move on to the reports of committees. Sorry. Yeah, I will ask, I will deal with tenders, but just before I do, can someone explain to me why some of these are here? Because they appear to be underneath the new threshold we've set. No, no, I know, okay, but it's, I understand that, but I still, okay.
Through Chair, this is just an indication that we, we do respect the timing of when the purchasing process was started with these particular reports, and we wanna be transparent with the council.
Okay, so it's basically, any tenders that started before we approved the new process are gonna continue to come forward under the old system?
Yes.
Well, hold on, hold on. Go ahead.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. We'll continue to use the same wording where the same conditions apply with respect to timing.
Okay. I guess, as my understanding, when we approved it, that we would have gone to the, to the new system, but that's fine. I'll go through the tenders then. Does somebody wanna move them? Moved by Counselor Iannidis, seconder, Counselor Schneider. So I'll go with, with questions. Any questions on pool supplies? Counselor Gazola.
I just wanted to ask a question. When there is only one bidder like that, is it allowable for us to then go out and try to negotiate a better deal? Or are we, the fact that we've issued a tender, we have to accept the tender?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Since the tender was submitted, we would have to go through for it for at least one year.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Tender number two, snow clearing and removal services. Any questions? No. Residential tankless water heaters, any questions? No. Printing production of Life Magazine. Oh, sorry, water heaters? Go ahead, Ms. Marsh.
Just wondering about this tender amount. I'm assuming that this is based on need, and we would purchase water heaters based on whether or not our residents are requesting to rent them?
Ms. Fletcher.
Through the Chair, that is correct. This tender represents approximately 50 units. It's about $1,000 apiece.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Questions on Life Magazine? Here to be several. Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, my first point, question is that I'd like it dealt with separately when you do go to move tenders.
Deal with all of them separate, or just this one?
No, no, it's this one here.
Okay.
Okay. I, I've been opposed to this for some time. I'm just curious as to, how many times a year do we, we go through this process of adding additional one or two pages? I'm questioning the value of what, of the direction we're going in. There was, at one time, we issued a whole newspaper dealing with, then we cut back and cut back, and I think the information that, in my opinion, the information that goes out with this is, is additional to what's already out there, and it's just an added cost that we incur every year. So I'm, I know there's a cost of some close $50,000 for the printing of it, but how much cost is there in putting it together and what have you? Because we have so many other areas of social media and, and media releases and all that. I just question the value of this. Now, now's the time to ask before it's-
So is that a question, Counselor Gazola, or a comment?
Well, no, I, the first thing is, I wanna know how many times a year we do this. The second question was, how much are we, is it costing us? And then the third part of it was a comment. I'm not, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, that's fine. You're entitled to have your view on that.
So the publication going forward will be printed four times a year. It used to be printed six times a year. The cost is, as printed here in the tender, so $48,000. The labor and material costs on our staff is, there is no cost to that. It's a graphic designer internally that puts it together. It's our communications and marketing staff that writes the content and does the photography. So the cost that you see reflected in, in here is the total cost. And so we did do a publication review to ask citizens what they thought of the publications. And this publication, as a result of their feedback, there was a strong desire for us to maintain, at least for the time being, a print publication to reach those that aren't on social media, that don't engage with us through the website, that don't tune into council meetings, and that wanna know what's going on in the community. So this reflects that desire. What it does is it combines two, formerly two publications, what was our best of times publication, as well as your Kitchener, into one publication to consolidate that information and reduce the duplication on those two things.
If I were to ask to, to see the report of our public engagement on this question, that would be readily available, would it?
Uh, y- yeah, we did a survey, so there was some survey results, and then we did engagement with our community groups that represent the seniors population in the community centers as well as others. And that survey was sent to council as well, so you would have had an opportunity to provide your feedback through that.
So we've already seen that, and I missed-
We've seen that at council, Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, okay, I'll have to find it and review it. That's fine.
I will deal with it separately.
And just, just a point, then, when you say our, we do pay our staff, so it does cost to do, to do the staff work, does it not?
It, it does cost to do the staff work, but that's part of our job and informing community members about what's happening at, at the business of council and the programs and services in their communities. So the content that would be in this publication would be things happening in the community centers, older editorial programming, events happening at the Kitchener Market, events happening at other city arenas and facilities. So we consider that to be our mandate, to inform and educate people about how to get involved in the cities.
Yeah, and I'm always looking to see if there aren't ways that we can reduce our staff slightly, but that's fine. Thank you.
Counselor Fernandez.
Yeah, we're a deficit for this project. So where would the funds come for the addition, the difference?
Through additional savings in other budget lines within corporate communications and marketing, so either in the print shop or in our other publication or advertising revenue line. So we would look to save in those years.
So you said this is a reduced cost because it's a reduced number of pages and, and times. Can you give us an understanding of what the difference was from previous years to what it is now?
It's actually not a reduced cost. It's a reduced duplication of the effort. So before, we were printing separate publications and sending them out separately. And so this is combining the two of those former publications into one. So it's not a reduced cost. It's the same cost. It's just in one publication instead of two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any questions on the Dune Pioneer Park Skate Park Consultant Services? Counselor Gazola.
I'm just curious as to what these consultants are for. This is, this is before we go to design, what, what a, I mean, we, we know we're gonna build it. We know, we know what's involved with, because this is the fourth one. So what, what are these consultants? What are we paying them to do?
Ms. Fletcher.
Through the Chair. The consultants will work with us to do detailed design, community engagement, and they will also prepare all of the tender documents.
Great. So I've been asked to deal with the Life Magazine on its own. I'm just gonna make a comment on it. I, I am pleased to, to see this here. I think if anything, I hear from residents always looking for the city to communicate more and get more information out to them, not looking for us to communicate less with them. And I also hear from different demographics that, you know, while some certainly appreciate social media, others are looking for us to have information available through our website, and we just did overhaul on that. Others who are looking for print material because they may not have access to a computer or not be computer savvy. And, and so having information available through something like this, I believe is extremely important. I know at the region, our, our regional newsletter and environmental news is, is extremely well received there by, by, by residents throughout the community. And really, I don't think anything more needs to be said on it. So we're asked to deal with that one separately in a recorded vote. Yep? Those in favor, opposed, that is carried. The balance of the tenders, those in favor, opposed, that's carried. We'll now go on to the committee reports. Community Infrastructure Services, Counselor Iannidis.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Marsh that the report of the Community Infrastructure Services Committee be adopted from items one through five.
Okay. Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, I have amendment I would like to make to number five. Amendment is just that the KGMP parcel ID number 145 be assigned as a priority.
Okay. Do you have a, a seconder for that? Okay, seconded by Counselor Fernandez. Sorry on that.
Yeah, I just wanna, did you say 145 or 147?
Okay, so you're seconding it, Counselor Fernandez?
Um, you know what, I'm just gonna step back from that for-
Okay. Can someone else second it?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Schneider. So I'll deal with that at the appropriate time. Counselor Gazola.
I just have a couple of questions on, on, on number two and, two and four.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm trying to understand what, oh, dealing first with number, with number two, the matching grant guidelines. I'm really not sure what, what we're approving here. This was already approved earlier in the year. What, what are we approving here now? What is really, is there anything different here?
Mr. May.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't have it with me, but the staff report considered by committee had a specific chart in it that identified, I think, 10 to 15 changes that we've made. These changes are based on the experience of running the grant for several years, and so I would classify them as minor in nature. But because council had previously approved it, we need you to approve the new guidelines.
Okay, I, I didn't see any of any great significance.
I would, I would agree that there's no major changes.
Okay, I just wondered sometimes. Okay, the other question I have, I was quite surprised later on in the day when we spoke about community gardens and how much people are interested in it, and, and they're relatively inexpensive to get going. And I would have thought that they were part of that matching grant, but I'm told no. And I, I just, it just doesn't make any sense to me as to why they're not part of that. That whole program, which you now, you used to have $10,000 a year, and now it's up to $60,000 a year, and we- I, it's up to sixty thousand dollars a year, and we can't include community gardens, which seems to be a very popular thing for communities, so...
So through you, Mr. Chair, uh, we certainly had this debate several times at, at, at a staff level. At the end of the day, uh, the benefit of having a community garden grant separate from a matching grant is we can be sure that funds will go directly to community gardens. Uh, I think the concern the staff had was that if they were only funded out of the matching grant, those funds could quickly get eaten up by other non-garden projects. And so this is a way to, A, be transparent in how much money we're spending on community gardens, but B, ensure that those monies actually go to gardens as opposed to some other project.
I, I don't follow that. I'm just asking why, somebody that wants to put, we've got sixty thousand to give away in matching grants, why somebody that wants to do a community garden, why they can't apply for some of that sixty thousand?
Because we have established and committee approved the creation of a dedicated community garden grant.
Another whole duplicate committee to do when we've already got a committee to, to deal with, uh, matching grants? I guess I'm, I'm, just don't understand.
Through you, Mr. Chair. This is a way to make sure that we get sixty thousand dollars into residents' hands for projects that they lead, while also getting money into community gardeners' hands for projects they want to do.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counselor Fernandez?
Yeah, I apologize for my confusion earlier, um, but number five, can we pull that one out separately, please?
Okay, uh, we'll be dealing with it separately anyway because there is an amendment, so that's fine. Counselor Gazola?
I had said I had a question also on community gardens. My, I, I raised a question last week about, again, I didn't see a great deal of changes in where we're going with the new community gardens program. Uh, and I was trying to understand what the big changes were, but one of the questions I, I, I kept raising was to do with, with, uh, insurance coverage. And I read the media release, and whoever wrote that, uh, dedicated a whole paragraph or something to insurance coverage. And, uh, I, I asked last week as to, have we had a lot of problems here? And, uh, my other question was that half of the community gardens are not on public city property. Are they covered under the city's insurance coverage, or...
Mr. May?
Just asking.
So through you, Mr. Chair, uh, no, the insurance coverage is just for gardens on city property. Uh, I am never a fan of more insurance, but I can tell you that this is actually a great news story. It was actually the gardeners who asked for this, and I'll tell you why. Up until now, uh, they couldn't take power tools into the gardens because we wouldn't allow them to do so because of the fear that they would get hurt and sue us. And so our folks here at City Hall came up with what we believe is a one-of-a-kind across Canada insurance policy for community gardeners that will now allow them to take tools into the gardens. And I can tell you, uh, the, the community garden that we just did at Stanley Park, I, I know that one volunteer told me that he spent hour upon hour hammering nails into wood because we wouldn't let him take a drill. Now he'll have the insurance coverage and he'll be able to take that drill into the garden.
And that's fine. When we talked about this last week, I said I'm totally in favor of this program, but no one seemed to be able to give me any answers on it. And now, uh, it's good to hear those answers. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions? If not, then I'll deal with items, uh, one through four first. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Number five, I'll deal with the amendment, uh, first.
Recorded vote?
Sure. Recorded vote has been called.
Can you remember the detail as to what parcel number was reported?
Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
Uh, it's the parcel that is, um, borders Ottawa Street and Trussler Road. Um, it was the one that I was talking about in committee meeting with regards to the clear cutting of the property. Uh, so it's, um, I don't know how else to explain it. I can show you on the map if that helps anybody.
So I was wondering if you could share that with us?
Sure.
Mr. May?
So through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Gazola. The, uh, the staff interpretation is that it fits the clear definition of a priority B. However, it is within council's hands, uh, to, uh, to change that to a priority C if you should wish to.
Is there a longer priority?
Uh, that, I believe that's the intention of Counselor's, uh, Galloway-Seelock's motion.
Okay.
I guess that, when we make that change, or when we talk to the developer...
Yeah, when we talk, when we make a decision like that, where we're making a change, is to what, do we talk to the developer to say, uh, here's what, uh, we're planning to rec- take the council for recommendation?
Mr. May?
So through you, Mr. Chair, just to be clear, this is not a staff, um, decision. So no, I don't believe staff have spoken to them. I'm, I'm sure we will call them in the next few days to notify them.
But we'll have made a decision by then. I, I'm not, you know, I just, that, that we should let them know. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so I'll deal with the amendment before us. That's carried unanimously, and I'll deal with the balance of number five. Did you want to speak to it, Counselor Fernandez?
Uh, no.
Oh, just a separate vote? Okay, uh, recorded as well?
Yes, please.
Okay. Go ahead and, sorry, on this? Okay. Opposed? That's carried. Counselor Galloway-Seelock, you wanted to say something?
So I just wanted to make a comment. It's not going to affect the vote, um, in my opinion. I voted against the second clause, um, of that report in, um, the committee, and I just wanted to quickly explain that, uh, in speaking with staff and understanding that specific parcel, um, and its connection to the other subdivision, um, that's why I was able to vote in favor of it today.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Davy, Finance and Corporate Services, please.
Thank you. It's been moved by myself and seconded, uh, by Counselor Dave Schneider that the two items on Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
Yeah, I have another amendment to make with regards to number one, with the user schedule. Um, I can give it to you. It's basically that we suspend, or not suspend, the, um, can't think of the word now that's on there, that we, um, hold the line, not increase the fees for the minor variances for fences and signs this year, and that we staff to, um, explore the possibility of creating two separate fees for minor variances, one specific to signs and one specific to fences, and being, have it brought back for the 2019 budget process. And I do that because, um, I feel that with regards to fences, that the fee is getting, uh, fairly high and very, fairly onerous for residents, and I think it's important to look at them separately. And if there's the ability to decrease the fence one, while the sign one may be more labor-intensive, I think we need to look at that as an option moving forward.
Okay, um, I'll deal with, uh, number one separately and with your amendment. Is there a second for your amendment? Seconded by Counselor Schneider, thank you. Um, Counselor Fernandez, on which one?
Quick vote.
A quick vote on both, or?
On this one.
On number one, that's fine. Uh, Counselor Davy?
Yeah, thank you. I was just wondering if, uh, staff had an idea of what the cost impact might, might be with respect to the amendment that's before us.
Mr. May?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I haven't, uh, had an opportunity to run the numbers, but I would suggest to you that it would, it would not be a major impact.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will deal with the amendment first. All those in favor? Opposed? That amendment is carried, and now the, um, the recommendation as amended. And that's carried unanimously. And number two, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Uh, moving on to planning and strategic initiatives. Counselor Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The items under planning and strategic initiatives have been moved by myself. It's going to be Counselor Galloway-Seelock for endorsement by council.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is, sorry, Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
That's fine. I just, I don't remember if I said anything, um, during the committee meeting with regards to the naming of the two parks with, um, regards to Community Infrastructure Services. Did I mention that I was, looked to have, um, staff communicate with the school board with regards to the naming of that park? I did mention that? Okay, perfect.
You did, and it's done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, I'll now go into, uh, new business, and we'll start with the motion from Counselor with regards to Kitchener Public Library.
Thank you, um, Mayor Verbanovic. So it's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Galloway-Seelock. Uh, whereas the Kitchener Public Library has received a multi-year pledge in the amount of two-hundred thousand dollars for their Studio Central project, and whereas the KPL would like to begin renovations in advance of the funds being fully received through the pledge, be it resolved that the KPL be permitted to spend the amount of two-hundred thousand for the project for Studio Central through cash flow adjustments, and therefore be it further resolved that KPL retain the risk of any unreceived future pledge amounts such that they be offset through other donations or internal budget reprioritization. So essentially what this is, is, uh, the KPL has received this very generous pledge of two-hundred thousand dollars. However, it's to be donated on an annual basis at twenty thousand a year for ten years. Where, uh, but the, the goal, uh, that the KPL has set is to, uh, do what we can to, to build the Studio Central portion of, uh, the central branch as much as possible and as quickly possible. So that's why we bring this forward on behalf of the KPL Library Board.
Okay, thank you. And I take it that seconded by Counselor Galloway-Seelock? Okay. Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
Yeah, I just quickly wanted to make a comment, um, that this is great news for the library, um, and a great donation from a community partner. And with using the word great, I'll use it again, that this is a great project for our community, and there's going to be lots of fabulous things for people to utilize within Studio Central. So I'm just really encouraged by the library's work to get this funding and to get this in place sooner than later. So I'm fully supportive of moving this forward.
Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I just have, I have a couple of questions concerning that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, my first question was, is that, I, I'm not clear as to what's happening here. I know that we, we spent a lot of money in the last few years on refurbishing the entire library, and, uh, what is this now that we're doing? Is this something that's worn out already, or is this additional to what we did? I want, are there any details?
Yeah, this was something that was talked about before, but Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
So Studio Central, uh, there's a space within the library that's kind of underutilized right now. It's got some computer bases and, and other things. What this is going to do is really make a bigger, larger make base. It's going to have a recording studio, it's going to have podcast rooms, uh, it's going to have a larger community, um, uh, sorry, computer lab. Uh, so there's a lot of different components that we don't have in any other of our, um, library facilities, and so I think it's going to be great for our community. So it's enhancement to what's already been done within the central library. So it's in addition to, it's not fixing anything that's broken, it's adding new services that we don't currently offer within our city, within the library.
And Counselor Gazola, you might recall, when the library came, spoke of it some time ago, um, they said that they would be looking to do this by fundraising and not coming to the city asking for additional dollars.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. I'm, I have a couple other questions. Um, I'd like to know what can, where does the library get funding from? Where do they get their funding?
Counselor Marsh?
Uh, over ninety-five percent of the KPL funding is from the city of Kitchener, and, uh, around three percent comes from the province of Ontario at a, a rate that has been frozen for about twenty years. And, uh, the other two percent is, uh, uh, other donations.
No, and that's fine. And I knew the answer. The reason I, the reason I asked the question is, when the library says that they will look after the risk, the risk is the city of Kitchener's risk, okay? The library really is totally dependent upon the city of Kitchener. I, I, please do not get me wrong, I'm not opposed to, to where this is going, I'm just asking these questions. I do wonder why we're dealing with this outside the budget process. I mean, uh, I, you know, we, it, it's, it is a good thing, but we, we need to, uh, we, we seem to be too anxious to, to spend something that we haven't really received yet. And, and why isn't it part of our budget process?
Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
Uh, there is no budget impact to the city, so therefore it doesn't need to be part of the budget process. And the risk, I think, that the KPL is assuming is that if there, we don't get the money, that they would still work it within their existing capital forecast. So they wouldn't come back to the city to ask for additional funds, they would just have to make it up over the course of a couple of years within their existing budget. They wouldn't, so the risk isn't to the corporation of the city, it's within the realm of the existing budget within the KPL. So I think that's the risk that they're willing to take, um, from the library board perspective. But again, there's no bu- budget implications for this.
No, but the fact is, and you've stated it there, that if we do this, other projects need to be set aside. Again, nothing wrong with that, but should we not know what that is? Maybe there's a project that's coming forward that a lot of people were anxious about, now it's not going to come forward. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with it, but just...
Uh, maybe that's a question of staff. How are we going to fund this? Are we going to be putting any other projects on the back burner or not?
Mr. Chapman?
Through, Mr. Mayor, the intention here is that this would represent an unfinanced capital balance on their books. They have a large unexpendant capital balance, so within their overall finances, they're still in a net positive position. But this would sit as an unfinanced balance over ten years and be recovered over that timeframe.
Thank you.
Okay. I think what's, what's important to, to recognize here is that this is not unlike what we have done with other community groups. One point, we had a community infrastructure loan program where groups, for example, borrowed money to, to install lights, uh, in, 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 uh, Victoria Park and paid us back over a number of years, or where the, uh, the Rangers, um, did improvements to our building and are paying us back over a number of years. They have a funding source for this, um, which will, which I think is absolutely wonderful that the library is going the direction of finding corporate partners to, uh, pay for things that in the past they've come to the city for. And, uh, simply, we need to, uh, be their, their financier during that, uh, as, as those dollars get collected. Uh, so, the motion has been moved and seconded. Okay. Counselor Iannetta, it's one. You're speaking?
Comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is, I think this is a, a great addition to the library. I know for myself, I've been very supportive when it comes to creating and... I know for myself, I've been very supportive when it comes to creating media and digital spaces for our community. And where we can have a facility where anyone has access to this type of equipment and I think is really a great, is really great for our citizens and will hardly support this.
Okay, thank you. A record has been called. Those in favor? Actually, sorry, it's unanimous. So that is carried. We'll move on to the licensing of cats. Counselor Etherington. No, you can just read the... The period resolved. So go on. Can you click in, please? Go ahead.
Be it resolved that Kitchener research and consider a cat license system that could be introduced after a series of educational public meetings and consultations, excuse me, helped, and be resolved that if accepted by council, each cat owner pay an annual fee determined by a staff to license each cat. And if be a result that in order to consider staff workload involved, you should be referred to the corporate business planning process. Should explain that those couple of paragraphs were resulted from discussions I had with Mr. May and with Gloria McLean. Before we get into it, Mr. Chair, I promise not to use any puns. And secondly, I would ask that in the third paragraph, there's a typo. It says, "Dog owners are supposed to buy," should be "buy." So I'd like that corrected. And again, I would refer council to the last paragraph of that motion, because all I'm interested in doing is researching the subject, finding out the work involved, and hopefully finding out the kind of income that the municipality could make to help offset the large amount of money going to the Humane Society, as we decided recently. So I have questions and some comments.
So you have questions? Okay. That's very enough. I'm sure others do, too. Who's seconding this? Counselor Schneider? Okay. Counselor Inedes.
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question to staff is, on average, how many complaints do we receive about? Do we receive many complaints about cats?
Ms. McNeil.
Through the chair, we don't directly deal with cats. It's the Humane Society as part of our contract that would deal with any complaints in regards to cats. So they have said that cats take about half of their time.
Half of their time? Okay. I guess my other question, too, is I don't have a problem with support to the business, corporate business planning process, but give us a relatively, an idea, how much would this take?
Through the chair, this would be a significant taking for us in workload. We would be looking, and I just have the chicken bylaw to compare it to. That took us about 18 minutes. I think through past experience, we've seen that any time that the city's considering anything to do with putting restrictions on animals, that there's a large amount of public interest with very strong views on both sides. So I think it would require extensive public consultation to ensure that we're hearing from everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gazola.
Do we have any idea how many dogs we have in our community?
Through the chair, we don't have an exact number. We have an approximate estimate from the Humane Society, which is about 50,000.
And do we have any idea how many of those are licensed?
Approximately 16,000.
16,000 out of 50?
Correct.
Yeah, do we have any idea how many cats there are in our community?
Approximately 1/3 of households would own 1.85 cats.
That's two, there's about 80,000 households.
I don't know how many households we have.
80,000 households, that's 160,000 cats? 150,000 cats, okay. The other question, I guess it's of Counselor Etherington. When? And you've sort of answered. Curious as to how much work's involved there on behalf of staff. So when would this be, something like this be tackled? This type of project?
Through the chair, if council wanted staff to review this, we would be asking that it be placed on the business plan and that we be given a timeframe of approximately 18 to 24 months to work on it.
And that's what I thought. So it's something that this council, this session of council, is not going to be dealing with. Do we... Is it common for us to put stuff on the table for the next group of counselors? Is that something... We're getting into 2018 when there, I don't know how many productive months there are before we can't do a lot of things because of the election. So is this a new for now, or is this an issue for a new... That's an issue for us or an issue for a new council? Do you have the right to pass issues along to a new council?
Mr. May.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Certainly, if council wants work to be done in 2018, it is an issue for now. As I recall, after the election, council would be engaged in a process to build the new business plan. Usually, my recollection is if we've already begun work, that work gets pulled forward to the new business plan of the new council.
Okay, if I can make a comment, I don't have any problem with it. I think staff did a good job this year when they brought forward the issue with the costs we have with the Humane Society and the responsibilities that we have in looking after it. And there are substantial costs, and it's had quite an impact on us this year and will in the future. I don't have a problem with it. I'm just wondering if this is the right time. And I guess the answer is if not now, when?
Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's another step that we need to take before we pass a motion of this nature. Sometimes it's more of an information. I know you're answering most of our questions, Gloria, but more of just a report back on what Counselor Etherington has asked for, like some of the research, the work that's actually involved, the income that could be made. Those are the things that he was looking at before we even go to the public, because I think we need to understand what we're getting ourselves into and other works that could be impacted by this, like what is it competing with? And so I'm wondering if that might be an interim step to have a report back so we can have the broader dialogue on, should we move forward with this now or later? Is that something, Ms. McNeil, that you think might be of benefit?
Through the chair, that would certainly be something that we could consider. I think whatever decision council makes here tonight, we're certainly open to either having a quick look and doing an overview of what might be involved in terms of time and some of those questions, as well as if council chooses to move forward with a full review.
Because some of my concern stems from varying options that could be put on the table. And some of the wording within the recommendation, that's implying that there's going to be fees. And even though we have to go to the community, I think there needs to be a more thought-out process of how we're going to do that. So I would like to see a report come back on how we would approach it, some of the research that needs to be done. You know, there's a little bit in there about other municipalities. You know, the potential for some income generation, maybe even some other options that we get versus licensing. And so I would think it would be not that great of a body of work. I don't know if Mr. May has anything to add to that.
Mr. May.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. If what you're looking for is for us to come back in early December with an overview of how we might tackle this, I think we could do that. I think some of the details that you've listed, we could not do. So things like trying to project revenue, the reality is we would have to renegotiate our contract with Humane Society, and in addition to new revenues, there'll be costs. And so we would not be able to do that by that time. You know, this motion is all about licensing. If you wanted us to come back and talk about other alternatives, I think that's much bigger than a December report. But if... What I would say is frankly, it's Gloria that's going to have to put this staff report together, and I think you all owe her workload. And so if you're not interested in actually passing this at the end of the day, please do not ask us to go off and do a staff report in December. We'll do it, and we can put a project plan and timelines together, but it won't have substantial details in that version.
Okay. But it could have what other... Because maybe Gloria will just ask the question. What other projects would be either this be put ahead? Or what other work are you working on that could be impacted by doing this large body of work?
Through the chair, we do have a significant project on our work plan for next year, which is administrative monetary penalties and involves taking the parking ticket process out of the court system and bringing it into an internal process that we would do here. So that will be a substantial amount of work that we're looking at doing on that project. So that's where I'm trying to find the timelines between these two, because this will... Given the public consultation, there will be a lot of work involved with this as well.
Okay, thank you.
Just before we go on, Mr. Chapman, when are we going to be dealing with the corporate business planning processes? Is it in January?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe you see the draft report on December the 4th.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fernandez.
Yes, Gloria, can you maybe give us an understanding of how many times we've had to deal with neighborhood issues around cat issues and cat problems? Would you, can you give us a... I mean, you said 50% of what the Humane Society deals with is cats. But I know that we have had some near issues related to cats, and roaming cats and things like that. Can you give an understanding, or would that be something better that you could put into a report in December, if that was where we were directing you?
Through the chair, that may be best brought back in a report, simply because the Humane Society generally takes the lead on any cat-type complaint. With significant neighborhood issues like you're referring to, we do become involved with those. But I wouldn't be able to give you a good idea of how many we deal with on average.
Okay. I know that you've been working on a responsible pet ownership program. Do you see this tying in or dovetailing in with that? Or is that something that would be outside of the purview of your pet ownership program?
Through the chair, the pet ownership strategy certainly refers to this. And I think what we were trying to recognize when we went through that contract negotiation was understanding that there is an impact of cats in the Humane Society, and we were trying to find ways to minimize that. Microchipping was one of the ideas we had come up with and had suggested in the report. Microchipping is a permanent implant, whereas licensing of the cats, not where a tag, that's really of no help to the Humane Society if they're picking up a cat. And again, by microchipping, they're getting that cat back home, and we know who the owner of that animal is.
Right. And so you led perfectly into my next question, was should we include... Would there be any cost benefit to us in the city for microchipping? Because the microchipping would have to be done by a vet. But there would be, we would not see any benefit to us for that, outside of the fact that returning a cat would, could happen much faster instead of the Humane Society having to harbor hundreds of cats?
Through the chair, that's correct. We wouldn't be seeing any revenue coming back to us in terms of microchipping. But again, I think we need to understand if, you know, are we looking to generate revenue? Or are we looking to reunite stray cats with their owners? And I think when we went through the process of doing the report, we were focused more on getting those cats home and not inundating the Humane Society with having to take care of them.
So microchipping cats for responsible owners would help get the cats back to their owners. It would also help the Humane Society deal with stray cats and feral cats, right?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. What, it would be your estimate of the number of feral cats? And so that everybody understands a feral cat that's lives in the wild, was born in the wild, and cannot, virtually cannot be domesticated, that would be a correct definition of a feral cat?
That's correct.
Okay. So what would the, roughly, if you have an idea, what population would be of the feral cats?
It's estimated that there's roughly 15,000 feral cats in the city of Kitchener.
Okay. And those are cats that we would never be able to license. But we still, but the Humane Society still has to deal with them, which is a cost to them, which in the end is a cost to us.
Through the chair, that's correct. The Humane Society also has a donation program where they sterilize 1,000 feral cats a year. So there is opportunity there to start microchipping those as part of the responsible pet ownership strategy.
Okay. Do you think it's important to include the wording of microchipping in this? Or would that just something that you see would come out of the work that you would be doing as to sort of options and recommendations that may eventually come to council?
Mr. May.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Given the significant amount of work, and Mill has already indicated that would be required just to look at licensing. If you're going to ask us to look at other options, I can tell you that that will take more time. And so we would want explicit direction from council on that.
Okay. I'm just trying to think of how to word it, because I think that there's benefits to both. But I think that the licensing is going to cost our bylaws a lot more time in the end. And I'm making an assumption, so if you think that's wrong, that microchipping is a one-shot, we're done, and then we can get those cats back home.
So through you, Mr. Chair. I maybe just repeat a comment that Ms. McNeil made earlier. It really depends on what you're trying to do here. If you're trying to make money, then an annual licensing fee that owners have to pay every year is a better approach. If what you're primarily interested in is making sure that when cats get lost, they get brought back to their homes, a one-time cost to microchip a cat, a microchip doesn't get lost the way tags do for licenses, that's their approach. And so we're in your hands. We'll explore either or none. Just understand the time commitment would be required.
One more question. If a cat, when a dog is captured, and whether they're licensed or microchipped, does the Humane Society charge them a fee, the owner a fee, when they come and pick it up?
Through the chair, the program that the Humane Society has in place is they will give a one-time freebie. So if your dog gets out, they'll return it home the first time. There's less stress on the dog not taking it to the shelter. However, if there's multiple incidents, then yes, there would be charges late.
Okay. And that would be, that could apply as well if initiated either licensing or microchipping of cats?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have comments after.
Counselor Singh.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. May has raised a good point as to what is the real intent of this motion. And I think as council deciding on giving direction to staff, that's something clarity that we need to get from Counselor Etherington. So if you would allow me, just ask a question of him. What is your end goal through this motion? Is it primarily, as said, raise additional revenue or to assist pet owners in return of their cats?
Counselor Etherington. Whoops, hang on. Go ahead. Too many people on. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Counselor Singh. I've always been intent on two very simple things. One has to do with fairness to people who have dogs who are supposed to have license, cat owners are not. And secondly, the amount of income. If you do the quick math on that, and I'm not going to do quick math, but we have 150,000 cats. cats, and you charge $25 a license, even if we went as far as we...
I appreciate that you're going to comment, I just wanted to know, is it return of cats or revenue?
Those things, fairness, which has been totally ignored, and, and income.
Okay, thank you.
To offset some of the $630,000 we're paying.
Okay, we'll give you your time to your arguments, Counsel Atherton.
Hopefully, my time can be adjusted for that. Ms. McNeil, I guess the word got, you had so much fun with the backyard chickens that this is being put on your lap. You're saying the body of work, would you prefer that you're given the direction, if this is approved along with this motion, the timing of that 24-month, so that there is an urgency? Or is it through understanding that you will get to this as you're able, based on the current My question is through the business plan. You will get to this once the already initiated work's done. Or do you need more direction that, you know, you have the extended time to come to this?
Mr. May?
Through you, Mr. Chair. If that would, so that's not our default, so if council wished to put the say on the business plan following the 2018 projects, that's certainly an option for council.
Okay. I think that is a prudent course, Mayor, that staff be given direction that this be put onto after the 2018 business plan. Again, there already a significant body of work that's underway. The other thing is, when we consider question of revenue generation, and through the motion, a few municipalities are referenced that already do have feline licensing. Have you looked at seeing what type of revenue are they, they are able to generate?
Through the chair, I haven't had an opportunity to do a lot of work on this. I have reached out to Guelph, which I didn't hear back from, and Humane Society also has a contract with Stratford, so I was able to get the numbers from that. So, they issue about 100 licenses for cats in Stratford annually. So, they're significantly smaller, obviously, but I don't know what, if that's good or bad for Stratford.
Okay, all right. That's surprisingly a low amount. Beyond the revenue ratio, so I guess part of the business plan and seeing what that review, like, you know, the licensing, what it would entail, seeing part of that is our own costing as well with dog licenses. Are there costs incurred by the city of Kitchener to issue out those licenses, and would be the sum for cat license?
Through the chair, there is a cost to the city. I believe we had a separate subject line for just the dog licensing component in the contract, and it was 113,000 that we pay them for just dog licensing. So, we would have to adjust our contract if we went forward with this in order to compensate them for doing cat licensing. They've also identified that they would have to look at additional staffing resources as well.
And we recently just renewed a contract with the Humane Society, correct?
That's correct.
When is that contract up?
End of this year, December 31st, and the new contract starts January.
January. And when did that expire, the new contract, three years?
Four years, I believe.
Okay, all right. I have some comments afterwards, but again, I think I already said, I think we have to give clarity to staff as to the importance of this work.
Counsel Davy?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering out loud, because I'm hearing a couple of different, to be honest, the amount of work that I've heard from staff going into this has surprised me. I came into this planning on supporting it, but now I'm wondering if there's along the lines of Counsel Galloway-Seelock, but perhaps more, even more of a middle ground, just throwing out there to the rest of council, that perhaps we could get some top-line information. I don't really think it needs to come to this term of council. If we could put like a, like a one-year-ish timeframe on, or something like that, where you don't have to develop a full strategy, but at least come back and tell us, because there's a lot of municipalities listed here, come back and tell us what the revenue model's like, how the reception's been, and at that point, we can make a decision whether it's worth pursuing the model on our own, as opposed to having staff undertake this huge body of work. Personally speaking, I'm interested in this only because the Humane Society certainly struggles with financing, and the animals suffer as a result of that, and as, I'm only interested in the financing for them. In terms of the microchipping, I'd personally much rather see any sort of dollars in that respect go to spaying and neutering. I'm not terribly interested in the microchipping. But again, just putting that other option back to council for consideration, because I don't really want to see staff do a whole bunch of work on this, only to see council ultimately not adopted. I don't think we have enough information to give them that direction at this point.
Counsel Galloway-Seelock?
Yeah, I just have a couple more questions. With respect to the new contract that we put in place, what measures did we put in place for responsible pet ownership, such as microchipping?
Through the chair, so what we had done was just provided a few examples of what we had strategized on, knowing that we would be developing this further. But education and educational materials was one, microchipping or sterilization of dogs or animals in low-income households, microchipping and sterilization of feral cats, and then responsible and humane management of feral cat colonies were the four big contenders.
And those were all intended to be looked at in what timeline?
So, what we had proposed through this contract was, as of 2019, any revenue above 445,000 that's collected through dog licensing would be diverted into the responsible pet ownership strategy. So, we won't know what that'll look like until we start seeing some of that revenue generation.
And so, that revenue generation could start now?
It wouldn't start until 2019.
It wouldn't start until 2019. Okay. I'm just wondering if there's also an option to defer this until we see what happens with microchipping, or some of the responsible pet ownership measures that you've talked about, that we've worked into the contract? So, I'm just wondering if that might be a good way to go as well, so just my thoughts right now.
Counsel Singh?
I'm for comments.
Counsel Gazola, comments? Ionitis, comments? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I guess my understanding here is from staff, if we were to even implement this, we couldn't even do this because we're under contract, so we'd have to renegotiate our contract with the Humane Society. So, how realistic is that?
Through the chair, I think they're open to having the discussion of going down this road, so I think it's certainly a possibility. I think they just have made us aware that that would mean more, more money for them in terms of renegotiating this portion of it that wasn't included in the current contract.
Okay. Mr. May, you wanted to add something?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just in case council didn't catch Ms. McNeil's earlier comments, in the conversation that she's had with the Humane Society on this, they've already put us on notice that if we were to go down this road, they would need more staff. So, right away, we would be incurring additional staff costs in order to run this.
Counsel Marshall, questions? Go ahead.
So, I'm hearing lots of different potential directions that we might be going here tonight, but just a question about when this consultation, if this motion were to be passed, when this consultation would be completed, and then recommendations would come forward, wouldn't the, would the Humane Society contract be close to being up for renegotiation by that point? Are we talking three years or more down the road?
Through the chair, I would estimate we'd be about halfway through our contract with the Humane Society if this were to move forward at this speed.
At the speed, okay. And would microchipping be something that just could be included in the, in the idea? Like, would that be, sorry, would microchipping be a concept that would be floated in any public meetings and consultations throughout this process as a matter of course, or does it need to be added into the motion?
Through you, Mr. Chair. As I, I believe I said earlier, I think if that's council's wish, you should explicitly put that into the motion, because I do believe that that will add more time, as we'll have to do more research and engage more municipalities to find out their experience.
Yeah, I heard you say that if we wanted that done, that we should add it, but I thought that it was an either-or, but if it could, if it were both, then anyway. Okay, so I, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Counsel Schneider, questions? Okay, go ahead.
Just wondering, I mean, the comment was made that if we go down this road, they would have to add more staff. So, what I'm having a hard time understanding is currently, the Humane Society is looking after cats, they're using staff and resources to care for cat issues, but that is partially funded by the licensing of dogs. So, I'm just trying to understand how gaining more revenue means that they would have to add more staff.
Through the chair, I believe the staffing component for them comes in with sending out the notices for renewals and the follow-up with that. I know they do with dogs, they do three, and then they start doing door knocks for people that haven't renewed. So, I think when you've got dog licensing, and then you're adding a whole nother licensing component for cats, it would be able to work for them, because they're currently not doing anything like that with cats. So, I think that's where the staffing levels are coming in for them.
Okay. Just, maybe there's some adjustments that can be made there, but I think the potential revenue might be able to offset some of the extra staffing costs.
Counsel Fernandez, questions or comments? Comments? Okay, Counsel Gazola.
Comments?
Yep.
Okay. We, we've...
I'm sorry? You're up after Counsel Atherton. You'll get your turn, don't worry. Counsel Gazola.
Okay, we've had quite a bit of discussion here tonight, and it's good, because now I've, I've come here, and I think I'm changing my mind on this, as to where we're going. As I look at this, I stop to think that we have a really good system in place where we come up with a business plan every year, and we sit there and decide, you know, what are we going to do, and what, how does one, how does one project buy against another? And we sort it all out, and we, we have in mind how much time staff has, and how many, how many projects we can put on their plate, and then we have a runner-up order for the things that don't get on there. So, we have this whole process. And to me, this should be, tonight, no decision made here, just refer to that process, and have our arguments when we're having our discussion as to what are we going to try to accomplish in this coming year. So, I don't, I don't have any problems with what's trying to be put forward with, but I thought we have a process in place to how to deal with things, and we only go out of that process when something comes forward that's urgent, and staff need to set other stuff aside to look at it right away. I don't see this as one of those urgent pieces, that we have to make a decision and push everything else to the back burner. So, I would just say that this council tonight should be referring this to our 2018 business plan, and that's what I will vote for. Thank you.
Counsel Atherton?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Two, Ms. McNeil, a couple of quick questions. I've always been puzzled on the issue of dog licensing. So, we have a bylaw that licenses dogs, and we only, if we're lucky, have 15,000 out of 40,000 people who license dogs. When we talk about workload, who is working on that to make up that 25,000 dog owners? And my second question, I'll just throw it out now to save time, on the whole issue of microchipping, which has come up, which I support completely, there's nothing to stop a cat owner from microchipping their animal and taking out license, am I correct? So, there's two questions.
Through the chair, I'll answer the second one first, it's quicker. There is nothing stopping somebody from licensing and microchipping their cat if they chose to do so, so that would be completely up to the individual. In terms of who is out there trying to collect the dog licenses that haven't been purchased, generally that falls to the Humane Society. We have had staff help out where we can. The trail bike program is one example of that, where we started that last summer, and when they were out and about on the trails, if they saw people walking their dogs, they'd ask to see a license. If they didn't have one, they would issue a charge. So, we're certainly there to assist in any way we can, but it's the Humane Society that would be responsible for taking the lead on that program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm in agreement with what Counsel Gazola has said. Initially, when I saw this, I came in with an open mind and seeing exactly what the intent of the motion was, and getting, you know, response from questions through staff. And from what I've heard so far, there seems to be a lot of pitfalls with this. The amount of time that would take to, to prepare, the work required, as well, again, the ultimate goal, if it is for income generation, how feasible is it? I think Ms. McNeil quickly referenced Stratford, 500 cats. Dogs, you know, were 40,000 to 50,000 in our community, and only 15,000 are licensed, and that's typically, there's an aspect of some sensitivity and fear from a dog owner, where they may be engaged with bylaw staff through, you know, walking their dog, or if there's excessive noise, and then there's a response through bylaw. Unless we get a lot of complaints through excessive meowing, I doubt that. But the seriousness of how, what the uptake of this license would be, I'm very uncertain. And because of that, I don't think this issue is as pressing for the community, that it would merit putting on additional workload for our staff, and they're already dealing with considerable constraints. So, I think the prudent course is, as suggested, that this be referred to, and I'm guessing that's actually a recommendation on the floor as well, that this be referred to the 2018 business plan, so that we can have a more holistic conversation as to a priority, and then hopefully, the returning of it, if it is supported, would come more closer in line to when the, the contract will come up due with the Humane Society. But as for now, I'm not supportive, and I think this is a more, larger conversation that we, that needs to be had through the business plan.
Counsel Ionitis?
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I too, I think, I agree with Counsel Gazola. I think we'll just refer this to the overall business plan and items, and whether this even makes it even an item to even stick on that list, it could very much well not be sticking on that list. But I'm also wondering whether or not I may even have a conflict of interest, because I am allergic to cats, so...
I think we'll argue that it's interest in common, Counsel Ionitis. Counsel Fernandez?
I was actually quite pleased to see Counsel Atherton's motion, because I've been dealing with a horrendous cat issue in my ward, and I know that our staff have had to deal with it, our Humane Society has to deal with it, and police have to deal with it. So, whether we put it on our business plan now, or we, you know, give staff some direction to bring minimal report forward in the next, in the coming months, I think we have to deal with this situation, because cats that are roaming, and it's not the meowing, that's the issue, Counsel Singh, it's the roaming, it's the using of people's gardens as their toilet, and their front porches, and their chairs that are ripped apart. It's a huge issue, on top of the feral cats that I know, you know, having that many wild cats roaming our cities and our parks and our woodlands is another issue. So, I think that we have to, I know that Ms. McNeil and her group have been working on the responsible pet ownership strategy. I think that there is some work there that may dovetail... I think that there is some work there that may dovetail with this body of work and may help move it along a little bit further. But it's, if we support having cats microchipped, what that means is that the cats get back to their owners faster, the Humane Society is not stuck with hundreds of cats to feed them and take care of them, that means that their costs are reduced, that means that our costs are reduced. Licensing would bring in some revenue, but probably not nearly as much as the reduced cost of having those cats brought back to their owners. And if the cats are not picked up, we know who the owners are, and we can at least speak to them and talk to them about the roaming cats and the issues that that brings to our community. So, you know, I mean, I'll support the idea of moving it to the business plan in 2018, but I really think that this council needs to take some kind of a stand and support the work that Ms. McNeil has already been doing in the responsible pet ownership strategy, and also take it maybe one step further and figure out where we can deal with the cat issue in our city, because it is pretty significant.
Counsel Singh.
Yeah, it's not really necessary, but I still want to clarify. The point I was making was not that this is not a priority because there's not a huge issue of excessive meowing. The point was that dogs, when there's cause for concern in the community for excessive noise, and they have to interact with their bylaw staff, that's when the question can be asked, is a dog licensed? So there's an aspect of fear, where this is not the case for cats. And so my concern was, I'm uncertain how motivated cat owners would be to license their cats, even though the bylaw may exist. That was the point I was trying to make.
Thank you, Counsel Singh. Counsel Fernandez.
I think what's important for us to understand that cat, roaming cats, is a significant issue, and citizens should be concerned about the impacts, because bylaw does get involved, Humane Society does get involved, and police do get involved. So just that, I think that was the message I was really trying to send.
Counsel Marsh.
Thank you. I am prepared to support the motion on the floor, at least part of it, and so I would ask that we, when we vote on it, that we number the three, be it resolved, statements one, two, and three. Number one, I would be happy to support that we research and consider the option. Number two, I think it's premature to decide that we're going to definitely have a fee involved. We need to do the research and the public consultation first. And number three, I'm also able to support, and I would add a small minor amendment, that staff include in the scope of their research the potential option of microchipping cats. I also may have a conflict of interest, as I am also allergic to cats, however, all joking aside, as a child growing up, we did lose a cat, and the cat luckily did come back six weeks later, but I can tell you from talking with many cat owners that this is a fear. People don't want to, who lose their precious animals, and microchipping or licensing or both may be something that cat owners would welcome, so that they could make sure that they don't lose their pets.
Counsel Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. For me, it comes down to the issues that Counsel Etherington mentioned. It's fairness and it's revenue. The Humane Society looks after cats and dogs, but the only revenue coming in from cats or dogs is from dog owners, and I think that isn't fair, and I think that needs to change. And the final be resolved is that, in order to consider staff workload, the issue be referred to the corporate business planning process. So that's in there.
Counsel Galloway-Seelock.
If I may, just a really quick question of staff. Is there any advantage to having the option to license and microchip, or do they provide the same function?
Through the chair, I don't think they provide the same function, a license if it's not worn. Most cats don't wear collars, so if it's not worn, then you'd have no way of knowing where that cat belongs to. Microchipping will definitely identify a cat forever. Again, licensing is generally revenue-based.
But why would a cat owner want a license? What's the advantage to having a license for a cat owner, or even a dog owner? I'm not a pet owner, if you haven't noticed.
In terms of the advantage of having them, I think it really comes down to getting their pet safely returned to them. People know that it helps to support the shelter in terms of the funds going towards them. For dogs, it's an immediate way to see whether or not they're vaccinated and have rabies shots, and we do, it is a requirement of the bylaw that dogs are to wear tags at all time if they're outdoors. So I think the challenge for us is going to be that if people are responsible cat owners, then their cats shouldn't be roaming at large, they should be in their homes because they're not permitted to roam at large. So I don't think there's the same advantages necessarily as there would be for a dog who is outside daily.
Right, okay. I was just trying to understand, because my understanding was that why you pay for licenses, in case you lose your pet, then that's the, like, that's the advantage, is you pay 25 or 50 dollars and you should be able to get your pet back if somebody finds it. Well, that's the same thing as microchipping, so I don't understand why someone would want to do both, but, okay, I'm just trying to understand. For me, this comes down to the fact that we are trying to work towards responsible pet ownership, and I think we need to work on some of the things that we already have in our contract and give that a chance. At the end of the day, you know, we're talking about revenue, and we don't even really know what that revenue's going to look like. And quite frankly, if you think about it, the amount of work that the Humane Society goes to, to license a small percentage of the dogs within our community, and we have a lot smaller dog population than we do cat population, if they're working that hard, they're going to have to double, triple, or quadruple their staff just to try and get that small percentage, and at the end of the day, that revenue's not going to be there. And the revenue, to come back to us, still isn't going to be there, because they're going to have to spend the revenue that they get on these licenses for cats to actually implement the program. And so I'm not sure it's going to get us further ahead. I think for me, there's still too many questions that are unanswered, and that's why I was thinking go the report route, but I don't know that I even want to go that route. You know, you can put it to the business plan, sure, and have it compete with other priorities, that might be an option, but for me, I'm not sure there's enough meat for me to move forward with this, because I don't see the advantages. So I think, you know, right now, I am not in support of moving this forward. I think at some point in time, we really just need to start working on the responsible pet ownership and encouraging cat owners to be a little bit more responsible than we currently see some. And we've got to remember that we can't paint every person with the same brush, because there are definitely people out there that have and are responsible with their cats, but there are obviously situations that, you know, harm it for other people. So right now, I'm not going to support the direction that this is moving, and that's my opinion.
Counsel Etherington.
Comment, Mr. Ben.
Yep, go ahead.
So I want to return to the subject of fairness. I think it's doubly unfair to dog owners who buy license, licenses, and we've already said that that's an estimated 15,000 out of a potential 40,000 dog owners. Now, even those dog owners who have licenses, they pay through their taxes, they pay part of that cost to the Humane Society of currently $630,000 a year, and then they pay licenses, $30 licenses, I believe, on top of that. That's grossly unfair. I think the city is losing, at least, when I look at those figures, I was staggered by that 150,000 figure, that was news to me, of cats. You look at those figures, and even if we get a percentage of those cat owners, you could be looking at millions of dollars, possibly $2 or $3 million, which would pay for the Humane Society costs. Now, I can't believe that cities including Guelph, Stratford, Toronto, Calgary, Ottawa, Mississauga, and others have cat licensing and are worried about workload issues. They've obviously gone ahead with it, and it's obviously paying. I guess we'll learn that over the next months, but that amount of money would be, would cut a lot of the costs of our taxes to everyone. For some reason, we always, or I've watched us retreat from cat licensing, because we're terrified of pushback from cat owners. Since I got into this and put the motion together, I had probably 12 or so calls and emails. I think 11 of the 12 were in favor of cat licensing, and a lot of them came from cat owners who care about their pets. So I don't know why we're so worried. More than half the work at the Humane Society involves stray cats. Cats are rarely claimed by their owners, I think it's about 11% compared to 60% of dogs that are licensed that are reclaimed. So heading toward an election, I can understand the struggle with this issue, but I think from, again, fairness and income, we seriously have to take a look at it.
Is that it, Counsel Etherington? Yep, okay. No other comments to be made. I'll make my own. Obviously, this evening, we're trying to be persuaded with some meownificent ideas around how to tackle the issue of cats. This is not an issue that has not entered this council chamber previously, and it's before us once again this evening. I'm struggling with the motion that's before us, because I'm not clear if this is simply an issue of a cash grab, trying to look at ways of potentially, and they say potentially raising additional dollars to deal with Humane Society cat care costs, because there would also be additional expenses that are going to be encountered. Or are we actually concerned about the well-being of the cats and thus want to focus on microchipping programs in order to return cats to their owners, perhaps, you know, charge cats that are found on the loose, or charge cat owners who are found on the loose numerous times, as we do with dogs, and/or deal with spay and neutering programs? That's a different story than simply looking at the issue of saying, let's license who are the sake of licensing. The argument is made that somehow this is all about equality for cats. I would argue that that, in fact, is not the case. I think we need to remember why, I believe, dog licensing was put in place in the first place. It was put in place from a public safety point of view, because dogs do bite, and dogs that bite sometimes end up, you know, leaving people having to either find out, was the dog vaccinated or not, does someone need to go through painful rabies shots or not, and so on. And so the whole purpose of licensing was to be able to address these issues and get that information ideally in those kinds of circumstances. We don't really deal with the same type of problem, typically speaking, when we're talking about cats. You could potentially find it in terms of the 15,000 feral cats that we're talking about, but the reality is that those aren't going to be licensed anyway. So, you know, I think we need to have more dialogue around what the actual intent is and where we're going with it, because I'm really not that interested in pursuing something that's a cash grab. I could be convinced that we might look at it if we're talking about the well-being of the animals and looking at something like a microchipping system. Regardless of what we end up doing, I think it does need to be prioritized within our corporate business planning process, which we'll be dealing with in December at the first opportunity, where council can prioritize things both for 2018, the last year of this term, and 2019, the first year of the next term, because you'll recall that our business planning process runs typically from the start of year two to the end of year one of the next term of council. And in fact, if this were to be considered under that circumstance, I think the appropriate place to deal with it, or the appropriate timing, would be to look at the first year of the next term and the second year, so that whatever group of people is sitting around this horseshoe would have the opportunity during their initial business planning process to decide if this is something that they want to pursue or aren't interested in pursuing. There's one thing that's guaranteed through all this. You want to increase citizen engagement? This is a great way of doing it. I guess my question is, is this the issue that we want to see all sorts of high levels of citizen engagement on, or are there others that we would rather have more meaningful discussion about? So I think that's what council needs to deal with. And so really, I think, from my perspective, I'm willing to support the motion to refer this to the corporate business planning process, but the other parts, today, I'm not willing to support. And so be dealing with each of the three clauses and with the amendment on their own. So recorded vote for all of them. We need a second or four of the amendment, second by Counsel Fernandez. So we'll deal with the amendment first, and a recorded vote has been called. And the motion does not carry due to a tied vote. All those in favor? Why as well stand, though, because... Who are the... Oh, yeah, in favor, sorry. Those opposed? Motion does not carry. We'll now deal with the first clause of Counsel Etherington's motion. Be it resolved, the Kitchener research and consider cat license system. Those opposed? And... And that motion does not carry. Those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion does not carry. And finally, motion to refer this to the corporate business planning process. Those in favor? Those opposed? So, we'll deal with this issue again on December the 3rd, I think. Okay, so now move on. Defenses on corner lots. Counselor Schneider.
You, Mayor Vivanovic. Do we need to read the whole thing, or just the...
Just the operative clause.
Okay. It's just, I'm introducing a motion for staff to be directed to review height and setback regulations for fences in exterior yards on corner lots. Review a comparison of corner lot regulations in other municipalities, and that by law enforcement of fences constructed in exterior yard lines or corner lots be suspended until the review is completed, except for those who do have some corner and driveway visibility triangles and any other safety concerns. And staff report back in early 2019 with the results of this review and any recommendations for improvement.
Okay, is there a seconder? Thank you, Counselor Gallois-Seelock. Counselor Fernandez?
Yeah, I mean, not dissimilar from, you know, our last previous discussion. This is a new issue and a new objective, a work plan. Do we have a sense of what this will take, time-wise?
Mr. May.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Unlike the last issue, I have spoken to staff who don't think that this is a major undertaking, and so it could be done without rising to the level of a full project that would have to be added to the business plan.
Okay, and so, we're asking for staff to come back in 2019 in the next term of council?
That's my understanding of the motion, yes.
Okay, and staff is comfortable with that?
Yes, absolutely. We could have it done by then.
Guess fences aren't as exciting as cats. Counselor Singh.
Yeah, I don't have questions. Just comment.
Sorry?
Just a comment.
Counselor Gazola, question?
Just a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Singh.
Yeah, no, very simple. Glad that question was asked of staff about the work involved, so it's, so that's good that it's not a huge undertaking. This is an issue that we do hear, all of us, around this horseshoe of disputes between neighbors or issues around fencing on corner lots. So, I think a review of our fencing bylaw is prudent, and some recommendations may come out of that. And I'm glad that the timelines that are established in early part of 2019 are very sectoral, reasonable of staff's current obligations, so supportive of the way the motion is written.
To be clear, this isn't calling for a review of the fencing bylaw. It's simply looking for a review of this particular piece of it. Yes. Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to spend any time discussing it tonight. I mean, the mover clearly states that he'd like to hear in 2019, so I think this is another thing that needs to be recommended and referred to our business plan.
Okay, so are you making that as an amendment?
Yes, I will. I will do that, because I think it's the same as the other issue. It's like, I really haven't looked into it, and I'm sure it's good, but being as they don't expect an answer right away, so I'll let it go and sit, look in the business plan and have it put in place there.
Counselor...
And I'll move that.
I'll come back to you. Counselor Gallois-Seelock?
Yeah, I just want to say that when I was newish on council and being an award, representing a ward that has a lot of new construction, this has been the bane of my existence some of the time and went through a huge process a number of years back with regards to corner lots. So, we did something completely different at the time. We looked at it in a different lens, and I think this is a good route to go this time and take a look at it more holistically. So, I'm definitely supportive. I know at that time, we put in place a man, it started the conversation to put in place a manual that now gets, or is, I hope, still distributed to all new homes. That puts a lot of regulation, or gives the new homeowner a lot of different regulations with regards to our bylaws, including fence regulations and pools and sheds and all that kind of stuff. And so, that kind of stemmed from some of these discussions that we had years ago. So, I'm definitely supportive of looking at this. I know the problems that can arise, and some of the things that came out of the last review or some of the things that came out of what we did last time was greening in front of the fences, which, you want to know it? It seemed like a good compromise at the time, and some people are still maintaining it and other people aren't. So, I think overall, it's a good time to revisit this and look at it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? If not, I will deal with the motion to refer this to the business planning process first. And sorry, was there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Fernandez. Okay. Yep.
So, I just have a question.
Go ahead.
Sorry, maybe your question's the same. But how is it, like, is that not the same business plan as report back in 2019? Is it not still going to be a part of the business planning process? Like, are we not... I see them as one in the same.
So, no, if we give this direction, it would be put into the work plan and work would be done in the latter part of 2018, and the report back would be in early 2019, as opposed to what Counselor Gazola is suggesting is that we wouldn't deal with it at all today and that we would deal with it next week as part of the business planning process, where council could direct for staff to do work in 2018, do work in 2019, or not do any work on it at all.
Sorry. So, the way I see it is that we're giving staff direction to put it in the work plan, but we still have to approve the work plan. And so, it's kind of one in the same to me, because at the end of the day, we could say when the work plan comes forward or the business plan comes forward, I'm sorry, it doesn't fit, right? And so, we can give this direction today, but ultimately, we still are going to have that final say when it comes to the business planning process. Would that not be correct?
Mr. May, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I would just remind council that you give staff direction all the time to bring back reports. That's the level of effort that will be required here. We do lots of things that don't reach the scale of the corporate business plan within our core services, and so the point here is, we can do this relatively quickly and easily, bring back a report to council with some recommendations for you to consider. The only length of time would be, we would certainly engage the community for a short period of time, but that's it.
Counselor Gazola?
I'm asking that we refer to the business plan. By referring it to the business plan, it's there along with everything else that staff brings forward, and we put some priority listing on it. If it's of major importance, it gets number one in the plan.
Okay, and Counselor Gazola, you're entitled, and therefore, I took that motion. I guess what we're hearing staff say is that this is not of a level that would normally require debate about insertion into the business plan. It's part of what council does in the day-to-day business of running the city. You feel otherwise, I'll take that motion, and council can see if they agree with you or not.
Well, I have a motion forward, and I will leave it at that.
Yep, so I'm going to take it. So, we're going to have a vote. If you want to refer it, vote yes. If you don't want to refer it, vote no. And we'll take that vote now. That motion does not carry. We'll now deal with the original motion. Those in favor? Those opposed? And the motion carries. Okay, that gets us through those items of new business. A couple quick things to report, not so much, well, actually, a couple of them are regional impacted and a couple aren't. December 2nd has been set aside as a tentative date with respect to the issue of Trainer Avenue and the pedestrian access to Fairway Road. Staff are finalizing that, and will be advertising that through our normal communication sources, but that is a day that's being targeted for a joint public meeting involving the city and the region. December 5th, I believe, December 5th, has also been set aside tentatively, and I will confirm that in an email to council, where there will be a special Community Services Committee meeting at the region to deal with the issue of fentanyl and the opioid crisis in our communities and getting a full and comprehensive update on that. At this point, it looks like it will be dealt with at the Community and Social Services Committee, but members of council can certainly come and not, well, can either be a delegation if they want to be a delegation. It seems to be the direction that things are going, and/or listen to the presentations that are going to be made from police, public health, and so on. And this has come as a request from Mayor Craig and a fair bit of discussion amongst regional council. Also, just want to remind council and the viewing audience that this Saturday is Remembrance Day. Remembrance Day will be returning to the Senataph at the corner of Duke and Frederick this year, and that service will be commencing 10:45 in the morning. And as you heard earlier this evening, at 2:00 p.m., there will be a service at the, an unveiling, rather, not a service, at the Kitchener Armory on East Avenue next to the auditorium, where we'll be unveiling our lav monument in honor of those who served in Afghanistan. On the regional council update, Counselor Gazola?
No, no, I have a question. When you get the questions and answers...
Okay, so, we're at questions and answers, so go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. I have asked staff about it. I noticed in a newspaper advertisement last week, talking about our new gas rates that went into play on November the 1st. The article stated that there would, average customers would be looking at a 2% decrease in their rates, and I didn't think that that was right. So, I went through a non-professional exercise of comparing the rates that we were now in play and the ones that are coming into play, or came into play in November the 1st, and according to my calculations, both ears are totally flat. There's no, there's no change. So, the point is that there isn't a 2% decrease. I know that at the time when this came before council, I had put forward a motion on trying to make a minor change to our supply portion of it to get a slight decrease for our customers, but that failed. So, staff told me that they haven't had an opportunity to check the information I sent them. I trust that they will get an opportunity, and if there isn't a 2% reduction, we should advise the public that the rates are not going to decrease but are to remain flat.
Okay, thank you. So, that was really more comment, I guess, as opposed to question? Or, you're not looking for an answer now?
No.
Okay, that's fine. Counselor Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Quick question. Will this council have any say over the location of the marijuana outlet? And secondly, will we have any say over whether or not it is located downtown?
So, I guess what I would say to you, Counselor Etherington, is the province has reached out to the municipality and indicated that they want to have a meeting with us and have a preliminary meeting with our staff officials to outline their thinking and their processes around that. Part of that discussion would entail their thinking around sensitive uses, or the placement of a marijuana dispensary around sensitive uses such as schools and/or sensitive neighborhoods. And so, I think it's too early to know exactly what the province's thinking is, but certainly, I've articulated, and I anticipate we will continue to articulate to the province, that we have those concerns, and those are things we're going to be, we're going to be looking towards as part of, as part of this process. At the end of the day, I think it's important to remember, when it comes to the province and the feds, they can ultimately choose to go wherever they want, but at this point, we have nothing but positive indications that they're wanting to work collaboratively with us. Mr. May, you want to add something?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Just to confirm that the province has reached out to us and asked for a meeting specifically with staff. The timelines are incredibly tight, and so, staff are convening a meeting this week to develop a series of criteria that we'll present to the province, things like ensuring that there's adequate levels of parking, some of the other items that the mayor mentioned around not being near schools or other sensitive areas. But I do believe that the province has made the commitment that they will, once they have specific sites they're looking at, that they will engage the community, and that's an opportunity. So, we will update you after we've had an opportunity to develop those criterias. We'll send council an email so that you're on top of the process.
The other issue that we, as a council, will have an opportunity to provide input in is the issue of safe injection sites, and that's a debate that's going on at the region, and consultations are ongoing right now. I have certainly articulated that it's my view that this is an issue that's across our region, and any access to sites needs to be throughout our region and not in any one location. And neighborhoods that are particularly vulnerable need to be considered as part of that process. But at some point, we, as a council, will have an opportunity to take a position on that as well. Counselor Marsh?
Yeah, to that end, I just want to remind those, all of us on council and anyone listening to our meeting, that the members of the public are being asked to fill out a short to our meeting, that the members of the public are being asked to fill out a short online survey about safe injection sites at safeinjectionwr.ca.
Thank you. Okay. There being no further questions and answers, we'll move into the first reading of the bylaws. It's been moved by Counselor Galloway-Seelock, seconded by Counselor Marsh, that lead be given the mover and seconder to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda, and that the same be taken as read a first time and standard referred to the committee of the whole. All in favor? Oh, sorry, were there any extra ones? Sorry, we didn't really vote yet. Madam Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have three late-starter bylaws. One concerning a zone change application for 319 to 331 and 345 King Street West, and two bylaws to amend by law 2015-142 concerning River Ridge Street and by law 2015-141 also concerning River Ridge Street.
Okay, so with that, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved to Counselor Davy, that council resolves itself into committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Counselor Davy. A move that the bylaws be considered as read a second time and recommended for enactment?
Very good. Those in favor? And opposed, not opposed? We only have one remaining item, item number three, municipal GHD challenge fund submission. Can I get a member for that?
Counselor Gazola's?
Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I will move it, but I have a couple of questions.
Please.
The first one, the first question I have is, how much money do our, does our gas works contribute for this carbon tax fund? The reason I bring, I think the answer is around $9 million a year. The reason I bring it, I'm asking that, is I thought that the province was going to collect this carbon tax and was going to allocate that money to municipalities or to try and come up with things that will reduce our carbon footprint. But here, it sounds we have to get in line and we have to get into a raffle as to what we're going to get. I thought we would be entitled to some funding without going through a raffle.
Staff, comment on that?
Staff, say anything?
I think... Is that indeed the case? Do we get an allocation, or is it a lottery system? We can answer that?
Well, it's not a lottery, it's an application basis.
Application, wow, lottery, tomato, tomato.
Doesn't look like anybody's looking to answer.
Okay, I...
Go on, Ms. Fletcher.
So I'm not sure I have the complete answer to your question. There are two separate processes. So there is an opportunity for an application related to City Hall. And Counselor Gazola, what you're referring to and Kitchener Utilities staff has made a commitment to coming back. Once the offset programs for the cap and trade program, offset projects and their criteria are known, we will come back to council with ideas that could be considered under that program.
Is that a different program than this program? I thought this is the one in the same program.
I think what Counselor Gazola is asking is, is the province going to provide funding on an allocation basis, you know, based on some figure? Or are they going to do it on an application basis? And at this point, it seems it's more based on an application basis as opposed to an allocation basis.
Okay, that's, I would like, we need to move forward, and I've not, we need to pass the resolution. I would like to know that, and I would also, if you could provide council with some ideas as to these capital projects that you're thinking of putting on the table. Is that, will that, is that available somewhere?
Mr. Chappell?
Through the chair, I would refer council back to a confidential email that was circulated by Mr. Redman, I believe, late last week. Because this is a competitive process, we've been fairly light on detail in the staff report, there is some additional background information that's been shared with council and will be made public once the deadline is closed.
Is this the same program, is this the same program that he was talking about in that memo, or...
Yes, this is that program.
Okay, that's, I didn't realize that it was the same thing. Okay, my question is still remain the same. We were putting money in as a pot, we should be able to get some of it out.
Thank you, it's been moved by Counselor Gazola. Any additional questions or comments? Nope, those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Are there any additional items, Madam Clerk?
Moved at the committee rising report?
Those in favor? And that carries, it's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Schneider, that proceedings and the recorded pecuniary interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the whole held this date, as attached here too, and form in part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed.
All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Galloway-Seelock, seconded by Counselor Marsh, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time, be finally passed and numbered seriously by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And it's been moved by Counselor Einertis, that we now adjourn. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried.